The City of Carizos Springs will meet in regular session on Tuesday, July 12, 2016 at 6:00 PM. At City Hall Municipal Building, 308 West Pena Street, Carizos Springs, Texas, 78834. Go to item number one, call meeting to order. It is six o'clock. We go to item number two, roll on establishment of court. I'll start to my right.
Jesse Johnson.
Oscar Ipuente.
Dino Hedo Valderas.
Sofia Morones.
Sandy Little.
Courtroom is established. We go to item number three, welcome and recognition of guests. Thank you all for being in attendance tonight. Thank you. We go to item number four, pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under our individual will govern.
We go to item number five, citizens' comments. Citizens' comments are a limit of three minutes. And we have Gloria Salinas Oakman?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, thank you. Um, I'm with the Ambassador Company. And I'm excited to be here this week. I am gaining sponsorship for a character building program for the first graders here at the elementary. I am working with Mr. Ortiz. He's my primary contact on that. And it begins with this wonderful book, To Build Good Character in Young Children. And it begins, they pick their picture in the book. This is the Be Good Bug that they find throughout. This is where sponsors are featured. It is one page of companies of good character. And these are the stories followed by lessons of good value. Good manners, yes ma'am, no ma'am, followed by a lesson with the Be Good Bug about that. It includes spelling lessons. So it's not just literacy and good values. This is about music. This song comes to life on the website. There is a webpage that is included with this program. And I understand they have smartboards here at the elementary. They can project the website and the book literally on the smartboard. And the children can interact with it electronically as well. This is a lesson about responsibility. Shannon visits her grandparents at the bar. She discovers everything that they do. And she says, "I want to help them do that in the community." This is about being nice, not being a bully like he's being right here. And they learn there is a better way to do things and what it means to be and make a friend. This is about my community, much like here. The firemen, the policemen that keep us safe in the community. And all the businesses that work with my parents to give me a good life. What do you do in an emergency? He gets scared, but he learns, "I must call 911." And if mom is not around, I get a neighbor that I know to assist me. He's a hero, but he still has to clean up his room and pick up after the dog. The importance of family is stressed in every book. Father, mother, and of course, in Texas, and I'm a native Sanitarian. Stories that we hand down, and we have a lot of wonderful stories in Texas. Stay away from poisons and chemicals under the sink. A lesson that knows good word and we know why we follow rules. Computer and phone safety is a lesson. Very important for them not to divulge information about themselves to strangers. And of course, take care of yourself. But what brings the program all together, and we're very excited about this. His counselors will implement this program or be a major force in it. In the back of every book is a parent/family guide. They get to take the home, the book home, complimentary. They keep it forever. I have a program in Pecos, Texas, West Texas. A principal had her book from us from 40 years ago, just to give you the credibility. So I'm excited to bring it here. But every story in the back of the book is summarized for working parents, for single parents, for grandparents that may be taking care of the children. Then, the values that that story teaches are listed. And then, a quality topic. If you'd like to take a look at that. Quality topic, quality time for parents and grandparents is given on every story. And the whole thing is repeated online. I mentioned that. And that's what I'm doing here this week. I'm dedicated till Friday to get the sponsors for this. In many of my communities throughout West Texas and South Texas, the city managers love to sponsor this program because it brooms future civic leaders. That's one here. And thank you for, please, letting me say a few words about this wonderful program.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Ray Garza? Oh, I'm sorry.
Oh, well, here is just a little summary about the Ambassador Company. Our parent company was founded in 1938. Still family-owned. Here's a summary of everything I just said. And here is just the address. You don't put anything down. And I'd love to give each of you my card. Please feel free to contact me. Can I have it? Yes, thank you so much. I know.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am.
Ray Garza?
Yes, ma'am. Um, basically, I want to compliment you all on your transparency. The administration has been really transparent on a lot of things. One of the things that might need a little help, if it is the way it was explained to me, is your recordings of your meetings. It was told to me that they only have them for 90 days and then they're erased. That's, I mean, I was talking to the county clerk and I was told that after 90 days, the recordings were erased and basically used again, as far as the states or whatever. Is there any way that we can keep them for historical value more than 90 days? I mean, as far as, you know, it is part of the history. The minutes are not that detailed at all. I mean, it only has, you know, what the issue was and who voted for and against, and that's it. Nothing else is included in the minutes. So if somebody's doing research or anything like that, they're not able to get anything useful out of that. So, you know, I just wanted to come over here and see if you all would consider keeping the audio, the recordings, changing them over to MP3s and putting them on a hard drive or something like that so we could get copies further on down the line. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, that's all. Anybody else? There you go. We go to item number six, approval minutes. We have regular session June 14th and special session June 27th.
May I say something about the comments? I mean, I know that we cannot reply, but may I just say something to the city manager? We cannot reply to the comments, you know, the public comments. And I want to make sure that they know that and that whatever items that we, you know, shared with us, that we will discuss with people.
That's correct.
That's correct.
That's correct, isn't it?
Just so long, make sure.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Can I have a question on page three of the events? Item number 13, it just says authorize signature tour. I thought you said... I had made a resolution to authorize the city manager to sign on as an authorized signature. Am I understanding that correctly?
You're missing a name, Melissa. Uh, page three of June 14th, regular, item 13.
Am I reading correctly? That should refer to John Vedari and in his, in his role as the city manager. All right.
Yes, that would be Resolution Number 500. And it would be to designate the city manager, John Vedari, to go ahead and sign for all city funds. And that particular portion of the caption, was, was that omitted yet?
I have to keep it a little bit longer, but I'll add it.
Okay.
I have one on special meeting, page two, item five. Budget workshop, we went in at a time and then we closed it at a time. You might want to document the times that we closed and opened. That's all I have for me. What was that there? On item five, the budget workshop, we went in at a time, just for record purposes. And then when we closed it, I believe I stated the time that we closed it.
Yeah, but these are only the minutes. If I may ask, they're only the minutes for Monday and not for Tuesday?
It's regular session June 14th and special session June 27th.
So is the minute for 28th or not included? Or did I miss something?
No, they're not in there. And the reason is, we had a number of special meetings. And, and the clerk wasn't able to generate minutes for all those meetings. She's still working on them.
We'll come next week.
You'll get them at the next meeting.
Anything else? Okay, I would need a motion to approve or deny the minutes, the collections.
I move we approve the minutes as corrected.
Motion has been made by Councilman Johnson. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second said by Councilwoman Little. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion is carried. We go to item number seven, discussion on appropriate action to approve accounts payable for month of June.
May I have a question on your council table? I only see, no gain, correct, and everyone on. She doesn't want invoice. Was there nothing, any more invoices?
There are more invoices, but our finance assistant was ordered home because of illness for a week. And she was not able to complete the accounts payable for, for the month.
So then we'll bring those?
We'll bring those back and probably at a special, at a special call session.
Not wait till on the afternoon?
And not wait till the next meeting in August. That's correct.
So then we want to table this item?
You could, there was one invoice that, that was shown. And it's the invoice for the city attorney's fees.
Um, on that one, I noticed we're still, they're still doing paperwork on that drone. We've already paid like almost a thousand. We're still... And also, on June 14th, that was the day we had our meeting. There's nine hours and 40 minutes we're being billed. I was wondering because I didn't think we lasted that long at the meeting. And post-meeting discussions. Total of eight hours. Oh, I'm sorry, page one of 11. We have a total of 6:14, a total of nine hours and 40 minutes.
I see 1:40.
I don't know why I love it.
What's the dollar amount?
Eight.
Oh, okay, I see that.
Eight hours, then one hour and 40 minutes. I don't know. It does, does this include the travel time?
I'm assuming it's two and twelve, that's four hours right there. But still, our meeting was...
Do we have the minutes, hold on?
The meeting will tell you when the meeting was called or ordered and when it was adjourned. So you would have that information.
Okay.
Another 1:40. Okay, that's the only question. Then that drone, are we doing thing on that drone?
Meeting was burned at 8:47?
8:47.
8:47? All right.
Yeah, yeah. It's two hours and 47 minutes. The meeting began at 6:00.
So 2:47. Got 6:47, got 6:47, we're billed by part eight.
Okay, you hear that one?
Okay.
Prior.
Post-meeting. This one says post-meeting. There's a prior one there. 1:40 prior and then...
We can table this and have the...
We can table this and have actually...
For the special meeting, that way.
All the bills.
Very good.
We put that in all the bills.
Okay, I as well.
Okay, we need a motion to table this item?
Make a motion to table item number seven, accounts payable, item number two.
Motion has been made by Councilman Fuente, seconded by Councilwoman Morones. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion is carried. We go to item number eight, discussion on utilities at Placita Johnny Gloria Comité de Mejores Materiales, Alicia López Martinez. Yes, ma'am.
Good evening. Good evening. My Alicia López Martinez and I represent the Comité de Mejores Materiales. It's a very old civic organization. It was organized in the late 1940s. And at that time, a lot of you may remember, maybe you didn't, the, the, well, you weren't born yet. Your grandpa was very involved. My dad. They were very involved, civic leaders at that time, with the concerns of the Hispanic community. And that was the principal purpose of the organization, to address the concerns of the Hispanic community. And one of them was building the Placita Cinco de Mayo, so we could conserve the culture of the Hispanic. And they built their placita and we had the festivals there. A lot of you may remember. We had a lot of Cinco de Mayo's, the fiestas patrias, and band concerts for the schools. And it was a wonderful opportunity for the community to, you know, reach out to each other. Because of lack of funds and leadership, people not being interested, all of this ended in 1987. And we did not, the placita lay dormant through those years. We tried to give it to the city twice and they, at that time, were not able to. First of all, because we leased it to the city, they could not get any funds, grants. Then we gave it to the city in exchange for property for the cemetery. And still, there was no grant for it for something like that. So in 19, let's see, let me, a few years ago, in 2014, is that the year of the oil industry here and the gas boom? Someone approached the, the county and they billed us what we have now, the new placita. Renamed, it was used to be Placita Cinco de Mayo, now it's Placita Johnny Gloria. So the county billed that, but our committee leased it for 99 years, something like that. So it's wonderful to have a placita. I see the children out there playing basketball. We've only had a few events. We've had three fiestas patrias and we've had two Thompson Street reunions and a few other small, excuse me, fundraisers out there by someone. What we are, what's happening is we're not getting any money from, to pay for anything. And this year, started getting bills from the city. And for the utilities out there, something that we had never had before. And that is the reason that I am here tonight. There's three other people in our committee. It's a very small committee. They were unable to be here. So I'm the one representing this concern. And our bills are like $69 for trash. The city does not make any trash here. And $26 for water. The bathrooms are only open two, three times a year when we have these events. And sewer, the bathrooms go, and, and a tax. It's a total of $131 per month. Where our committee is not, we're not raising any funds. I think we've got like $150 from this last two-year reunion. The other ones have been, well, a donation, small donation. The church had, they did have an event out there, service, and they gave us a small donation. So we're not receiving any funds to pay for, for this. What I would like to see is that we are offered the same, what would I, how could I say it? What you're affording, your own park, you know, you're paying for everything at your own place. I don't know about the golf course. I know it's always been an issue about the water at the golf. And they do bring in monies when they have, you know, their tournaments, which I haven't seen recently. And then the new county park. My question is, how is the city helping or is, or not helping? And I would like to see the same help for them afforded to our smaller group. We are a civic organization. We're providing services to the youth and to everyone that, that wants to do something out there. The thing is that we're asking, well, can you pay? Can you give a donation? And what I understand, and correct me if I'm wrong, all the events at the city park, the pavilion are free? Is that correct? So why pay our little committee when they can go to the city to do their events out there? And we do have a good pavilion for good size, you know, dance or reunions. And we have that big basketball court that I know the boys and children are using. The county is paying for the CPNL bill, and I don't know how much that is. But the lights are on every night out there. They have a, they had a little machine where they, they would be able to put in quarters and they kept writing it. So they have a system out there that, where the lights come on at a certain time and they go off at a certain time. So I am here, in the company, asking for your help and see how we can resolve this.
Well, thanks for the, for the, what you all do, and I know the committee is just a few people, you know, kind of basically the way most organizations, hard to get people in, involved. You know, thanks to the county for what they did out there. And I would like, you know, see if we could find a way to help them out as far as the water and the sewer. And the only time you all don't water out there is just what's used in an event.
We don't have anything planted, no grass, nothing, you know, out there. I know Mr. Ramon Garcia was the past president and he left this year. And we don't have, we only have a secretary. I'm not the president. I'm just the person, the thing, everything fell on my lap. Because there's three other people, one works and the other lady, you know, she helps out there. So he said that at one time, and I think I left a message from Alyssa to look into that. I called it an ordinance. I don't know the difference between that and an agreement years ago with the past administration.
I was about to touch on that. If I do recall, it was 2014, Mr. Garcia came before council. Council approved 3,000 gallon per month usage. Anything after that, your, the committee would be responsible. Obviously, there's a meter for them to be reading. Are y'all going over the 3,000?
I don't know. I don't know. I have the bills with me. I guess that...
Because I was the understanding that the council?
I don't even know how much 3,000 gallons of water is, but...
It's, would they average it what a regular household would use, consume on a monthly basis?
Well, we're not even using that. We're not there every day. There's no water being used. The water, excuse me, the water faucets are, you know, that where you turn them on, they're, they're not there. Mr. Oliegas, county commissioner, has those because they, children would go out there and just let the water run. But that hasn't happened.
So that bill that you have is for one month or several months?
It's for several months. I kept talking to people and I thought it would go away, I guess. I don't know why. American will happen. But now we owe $500, $520.
Uh, Mr. without a, may I ask, is this request, does she have submitted? Is that enough for you to act on it and then, and then, you know, what the mayor said, for you to go back and investigate that?
I can go back and...
We have, the minutes are not in the book. We have to refer to the audio. And that's something, I can get with Melissa because I was the city clerk at the time.
We can do that. There's, the meter's probably triggering the charges, so there, there are minimum charges, whether you use or not, if there's a meter there. And so that's probably what's been happening, so, but it's...
Especially if our kids are using it.
Exactly.
They were, they were, y'all...
Every day, they play.
They were, yeah, and we're giving a 3,000 minutes per month. Anything exceeding that, they would be responsible for that because of exactly what you're saying. There was no usage.
There's hardly any usage, exactly. So we can go back and look at the...
At their average and see what they're using.
Exactly. And see if that's under 3,000 gallons, and I'm sure it is.
So is this, is this request enough for her, at least to honor the mayor, whatever she was saying that they honored back then, and to work for her, or does she need to submit something now specifically?
No, I think in light of the fact that the mayor brought that, that other matter of, we can go back and look, check the record, and based on the usage that, that's being done out there at the facility, it sounds like they would not have to, exactly. So we'd go back and do that.
Yeah, I appreciate it.
Which is like three times a year, maybe at the most four.
This year, we...
So they shouldn't, that's why they gave them 3,000, 1,000 gallons.
And I did want to ask that counties already pay, I did say that, CPNL. And Mr. Oliegas, Commissioner Precinct One, he goes out there. He takes his workers, they weedy, they pick up the trash. Because the barrels are within the perimeters of the inside. They're not outside. So the trash is not being picked up. So it's a felony, let's just say that. And when we do have an event out there, I ask the people to take their trash back. And a lot of them have taken their trash home. So there's nothing out there that, for the county to pick up. And I think $69, I'm not, I don't live in the city limits, so I don't know how much it is for trash in a, in a home. Is it $69 or is that a business rate or?
Well, the, the trash would be part of the, of the...
The standard.
Exactly. It's a standard charge, so it all falls together.
No, look into it for your money.
I think I appreciate that. Shall I wait and see and come back or?
He has, he should have your information on the...
I'll get some information together. We can sit down.
Okay, thank you. Let me know. Thank you, I appreciate that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We go to item number nine. Item was just for discussion.
Just for my own information, after you've done the research and after you've talked with Ms. Martinez, will you report back to us or do we just wait until something happens? How will we know if this has been resolved?
Well, we can go ahead and add it as an agenda item and report back to...
Remember I had asked if you could include the city manager's report each time?
Yes, we'll start doing that and...
Could that be part of it?
It could be part of that report.
Okay, thank you.
We go to item number nine, discussion on issues with overgrown weeds and speed bumps. Jesus Jaime Munoz? Mr. Munoz, no?
He's there.
Has he notified? Okay, Mr. Munoz is not present. No action is needed on item number nine. We go to item number 10. Discussion on appropriate action improving ordinance number 755 announced by the city council of the City of Carizos Springs to set maximum reasonable and perdued speeds on US Highway 83 from mile point 7.059 to mile point 7.954, from mile point 7.954 to mile point 8.732, providing a severability clause, providing a penal clause, providing for publication and naming an effective date. Mr. LaRoe.
Uh, Madam Mayor, Madam Council, Mr. Danny McGee from TechStop is going to be here this evening. Item, Mr. McGee, would you care to address the speed limit issue?
Good evening. My name is Danny McGee. I'm the director of the transportation section for TechStop, I work at Malerato. As part of one of our duties is we set speed limits in cities and highways throughout our district. And we were asked to look at the speed limit of Carizos Springs in lieu of the risk of brutality we had. We had set the speed limit before that a few years ago, so we looked at it again. And we were able to, to, I guess, extend the 35 mile an hour section a little further out to Walker Street. And that's what we're asking to do. And we're also going to lower a little bit over closer to where 517 and 1407 are. So it pushes out the 65 and the 70 a little bit further out of town. We have been asked a while back from the hotels in that area to look at lowering the speed a little bit. And that's what the results of that is right now.
So these signs are not yet, right?
No. The way it works is, I don't know how in-depth you want me to go, but I can explain the process is...
The reason, excuse me, the reason I, I, I mention that is, you know, saw 35 and 45. I mean, I was telling Mr. without, you know, that that's what I saw out there.
Yeah, it's 35, but I think right at, right before Thompson Street. Yeah, it's 35, but I think right at, right before Thompson Street. Yes, we exchanged to 40, 45, but we're gonna push that up further. So you have more 35 section. So you're, it's a lower speed for longer.
Okay, so 35 hits right there on 225, loop 225, and then it's gonna go all the way up to Walker?
Yes. You know, is it the area, I guess, just right out here where 277 and 83 meet? Further out that way, all the way to Walker would be 35.
Right, so it's gonna be a longer stretch of 35 and it's not gonna...
Right.
I, I got one question.
Sure.
In, in Crystal City, like when you go through the highway through Crystal, which is not into town, it's, you know, a little curb as you head toward Uvalde, that one's 30. How do they get to 30 and if we have more traffic?
Well...
I don't know if you can answer that.
I, I can answer it in, in general. I'll, I'll go back and take a look at that one. Honestly, as, in my opinion, state highway shouldn't be 30. We're, I, just, just trying to reach a balance between serving the community, safety, and also moving traffic. To me, a 30 mile an hour only really belongs in a residential neighborhood. But notwithstanding that, the way we set speed limits, it's, it's not even arbitrary. I don't go out and look at a highway and say, that's 35, that's 40, that's 50. I don't do that. We use, the method is really used throughout the whole US. It's called the 85th percentile method. I sent one of my guys out with a radar gun, where we put cameras up, and they actually count so many vehicles for two hours, three hours, four hours, whatever we need, to get about 250 vehicles. And then whatever, 85% of them are going, that's about where the speed limit is gonna be. Now, I do have some discretion to see if we have a lot of driveways. Driveways tend to make, you know, cars slow down a little bit. If we have narrow roads, if we've had a lot of accidents, I can use my engineering discretion to lower the speed limit accordingly. And that's what we did in this case. So the, the 30 mile, it might have been looked at for a while, but I will go back and look at it.
It's been for a while, 30 miles.
So, I'll go, yeah, we, we try and do them every, at the very minimum, every five, six years. Or whenever development changes. Like in this case, you know, I know if you're back in 11, we had the oilfield traffic all of a sudden increase. And that's when we helped you establish the truck, the truck route. So things change, and that's what we, we looked at it then. And then because of what happened recently, we, we looked at it again.
So then that highway, there's no way then that we can have it at 30 miles an hour? Because it's not a residential area or?
Well, like I said, you, you heard my opinion, but that's just my opinion. Okay, so we counted traffic, and honestly, it should be, probably be at 40, 45. But because of my discretion, we were able to lower it down to 35. You know, the, the trucks are coming through here still. I mean, I know it's, it's, it's a, you know, a fraction of what it used to be. But they're still going 40, 45 miles an hour.
Yeah, well, you, so you have the traffic that goes from Laredo to, to the west, or California, whatever. Not necessarily oilfield trucks, but just regular, regular semis. And that's quite, that's quite a bit.
When, when, when we count the traffic that, explaining 85th percentile, we don't count trucks or buses. It's just regular, uh, pickups and, and cars. So they're, they're excluded from that measure. So in, in, in a way, and I hate to say it like this, but I hope you see the irony in it. You're setting the speed limits. It's the people that are driving the, the cars and the pickups going every day through it. That's, that's the people we're setting the speed limit. And the whole point about it is that it's kind of trying to reach a balance again between something that's too low, which I think a 30 mile is. I don't know if you've ever driven on a highway 70 miles an hour, and then obviously you come into town, 30, feels like you're standing still. You know, it's very, very slow. You know, I know as a driver in your own town, you say, well, 30 is fine, but you come into town, 30 is very, very... So we create a kind of speed trap when it's too low. And people won't follow the law that way. So we try to set something that's reasonable. And that's where the 85th percentile has been developed for many, many years. It says that people that go 85th percent of what everybody's traveling is deemed safe because the Texas law is based on driving a safe, a safe speed that for the, for the, I guess, for the, the day, the weather you're driving at. In other words, you know, everybody knows that the speed limit is 75 miles an hour on 35. But if it's raining, the speed limit's not 35. It's whatever is safe and prudent for that, for that situation. And it's the same thing for, for what we're doing here.
Well, I do want to say thank you. And I know that accident with the fatality we had was kind of a big, I mean, I know you have a lot of concerns from our community, and I thank you for that.
Well, I mean, that, that's my job is to look at safety throughout our whole district. And we rely on citizens, city council, city managers to tell us. I mean, I have a staff of about 14 people. That includes my, my techs that do the, the traffic signals in your town. They're out of Del Rio. So you can see we cover a big area. So whenever the council, the city manager have some, a concern, please let us know and we'll look at it. I mean, we rely on you to let us know. We, we don't, we can't drive the roads every day, so we rely on you. So thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, just one last thing, I'm sorry, is the reason it's before you to ask, pass an ordinance is that that's the way we're set up. Is the city council passes an ordinance. The reason we do that is really more of a common sense thing. You guys have the guns and the badges. You're gonna enforce the law. So we want you to feel comfortable enforcing it. It'd be easy for us to go to a commission meeting and say, we're gonna set it at 45. Well, if you don't like it, you're gonna tell your cops, you know, don't, don't enforce it or whatever. So we try and work out something that you guys are comfortable with. And if you're not, you can come back to us and we'll try to see what you can come up with.
Well, like, like any, just like you said, you know, the, the enforcement of the speed limit is gonna be a big thing. Because I, I took a cruise and when it was 45, everybody went 55. When it was 35, it was going 45. And there's no, no enforcement on, on the road. So, you know, still enforcement starts coming down on speedsters or not following the, yeah. And this is with the one that's set up the way it is today.
Yeah.
So when you extend it, you know, it's gonna be up to it being enforced. If not, what, does us no good.
And, and actually, by us doing this study, it, I think it validates when you, when one of your police officers or the sheriff stops somebody, because now the judge says, we, we just had a study and 85, 85% of the people are driving this speed. You're the, you're the 15% over. So he doesn't have to feel bad about giving that guy a ticket. Anybody else around that area, he's the outlier, so. If any other questions that I can answer, let me know.
Okay, can I ask a, I'm sorry, question?
There, there was also discussion about a, a traffic signal. Is that gonna be a separate issue?
Uh, it's a separate issue, but I can talk to you about it if you want me to.
Sure.
Okay. That, that's already been designed. Actually, my coworker here, Albert, is the one that designed it. That's why I brought him with me, and he knows your town pretty well. Uh, we've designed it, and we have what's called a stand, a non-site contract. We have a contractor. We go out for bids, and then he just sits around and waits for me to give him work. Okay, so we designed it. Albert designed it. We turned it into him. And now the, the hard part is it takes two to three, four, sometimes four months to order the poles. Those poles are specially made for every intersection because they have to span certain distance. And that's where we're at right now. It's already been ordered. The contractor has a work order. We're just waiting for the poles to come in. So you're gonna get a signal at Thompson.
So like the timeframe would be like a month, a week?
Uh, in all honesty, we just ordered them a few weeks ago. It's probably gonna be September, October before you see them up there.
And it's going to be exactly where?
At Thompson Street.
On Thompson, right there? Where they used to, where they used to, that's what I'm saying. It was there, now it's...
The reason, the reason I bring it up is exactly that, is that we asked that the signal be put in. Five years later or so, the signal disappears. And then when the issue came up on account of this fatality, we started asking questions, and what I gathered was people complained about the signal. You know, motorists complained about the signal. And what concerned me was that apparently none of the local officials, like the city council, knew that it was an issue. The thing just disappeared. And it, it's as if the local governments didn't have a, a voice in that. How does that work?
Well, I, I need to correct you, sir.
Sorry.
The council at that time did present a resolution to Tech Stop, and we were opposing them to remove that.
Oh, even better.
We, the city council at the time opposed that traffic.
Removing the signal, okay.
Do you think if the motors, I'm sorry, were like local or was it just passers going by?
Right.
Okay.
So then over the protest of the city council, the thing was taken down. How does, how does that work?
You can blame me for that too.
Okay.
The, the way it works is this, is a, a traffic signal, if you ask me for a traffic signal right now on corner X in 83 or 277, I don't just go out and say, okay, yeah, I have the money, I'm gonna install it. Okay? We have, we have to meet what's called warrants that are established in the Texas manual on uniform traffic control devices. And much traffic on the main street, one is based on too much traffic from the side street, things like that. Okay? That signal, we, we monitor the signals, okay? So every two, three years, we'll go out and take counts to see if it still meets the warrant. Because even if you have a traffic signal, we still have to see if it's warranted or not, if it still meets one of those warrants. So I started working with Tech Stop in two, in the year 2000, and we monitored for five, six years. And it didn't meet warrants for almost five, six years. It just finally got to the point that it didn't, and so we, that's what we do. When we do that, we put a big sign up that says, "Understudy for removal." That's probably when the resolution came through. Now, why would you say, well, if the signal's already there and you were invested in it, why not just leave it alone, right? It's not bothering anybody, et cetera, et cetera. Well, the fact is sometimes a signal, you put it up for one reason and it causes other, other problems. You, you may put up a signal to avoid T-bone crashes, then you start getting rear-end crashes. So those are the things that we were seeing. There was some rearing crashes there, and it was very minimal traffic. I mean, we took, like I said, we took counts for five, six years before we decided to do it. It wasn't a rash decision. And it also, every signal we have out there, when it's not seen by the public that it's needed, you lose respect for the ones that are needed. It's like a sign. Every sign that I'm asked to put up, I look at for several reasons. First of all, it becomes something on the road of somebody to hit. And then if I put up too much signs, what happens? You see, you get a jungle or a forest of trees, and you start ignoring one. So I'm very selective about which ones I put because the next one could take an appeal from the other one. And it was the same thing with that signal, but...
Well, like on, on that intersection, really the concern is that way. Now Thompson does have traffic somewhat, but the other side of the street, it, it, it's like a little small street that really goes to just the two blocks.
On the south side?
Traffic coming in from that way. And I don't know if that shows up as being that it's not needed there because of the amount of traffic coming in from that road. I mean, but you'll have it on the highway and you'll have it from Thompson, because, you know, but not the other side.
We have different scenarios that it has to meet, and it just wasn't meeting any of them for a while. But this was pre, pre Eagle Ford and once Eagle Ford came on. Actually, actually, we, we took counts like in the last four years, like three times. And it's still, even with Eagle Ford, it wasn't meeting traffic. Because there was heavy traffic on 83, but there was minimal traffic coming out of Thompson.
So once it's up, is it going to stay there for a while?
Yeah, at least for a while, yeah. I, I can retire in three years, so hopefully I won't be here by...
Anything else for Mr. McGee? Do you have anything else for us, sir?
Uh, no, I just thank you for your consideration of, of the ordinance, and we'll be working with you on any, this and any other issues you could, you would like for us to work on.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Stay here. We need a motion to approve of the night ordinance number 755.
I make a motion to approve for number 75.
Motion has been made by Councilwoman, sorry, Councilwoman, hold on a minute. Seconded by Councilwoman Little. All favor indicate by same eye.
Aye.
Aye.
All oppose, same sign. Motion is carried. We got item number 11, discussion on appropriate action on approving planning and zoning recommendations to city council. Is installing a mobile home at lot 14, 1707 Burns Street, Crazel Springs, Texas, Luis Garcia. Mr. Verdul.
Mayor members of the council, the planning and zoning commission met on July the 5th. They reviewed the request from Luis Garcia to install a mobile home for a resident on vacant property at 1707 Burns Street. And Mr. Verdul Garcia was also at the planning and zoning commission meeting in the foundation.
They went ahead and approved planning and zoning recommended to, to y'all that, to go ahead and let them put a single white mobile home. Mr. Garcia. Actually, the property belongs to Mr. Sinna. He, I believe he's gonna sell it, like, not rent to own, but he's gonna buy it like in payments to Mr. Garcia.
Owner finance.
Yeah, owner finance, the property is. Prior to, to this, right now it's in, there used to be a mobile home years back. Uh, and I sent out like 20 certifiers around. And no, I only had two responses, then yes, two neighbors back, texted back, maybe, to say, yes. Uh, nothing else.
I, I thought, maybe I'm wrong, or we're not supposed to put single whites in cities.
If they come before the planning and zoning, that's a process, that's why he's here before us.
Y'all are the ones that approved, yes or no? Planning and zoning recommended, yes, to y'all, but y'all have a final decision.
On, on, on the second page, it says 400 cash paid. What is, what is that motion?
That's the application fee, the application application.
The meeting process.
And, 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 and I would tell them that it's, it's not affordable and it's, that don't mean that they are gonna get...
Whether it's approved or not.
Yes. And I always let them know, I have that.
Bishop Hamels, do you see a, a concern for the neighborhood with that traffic there, concern?
Right next to it, Mr. Sinna actually lives next to it. He has a double white there. Like I said, I sent letters out all around, 250 feet around, and then it was about, I would say like 20 letters certified. And I met, only four came back that they didn't, they didn't sign forms, so I got those back in the office. But the rest, they did accept and had no response because I have like a question, yes or no? And two of them came and said, yes.
So, and of course, they'll, they'll follow all the rules of the covering.
Because already under those standards.
I, I did tell them that, that before the water service would be turned off, the scrubbing needed to be covered all around. And he's bringing it to the office.
Do we have any more questions from Bishop Hamels, Bishop Garcia? We need a motion to approve or deny the recommendation of the planning and zoning commission.
Making motion to approve.
Motion has been made by Councilwoman Little. Seconded by Councilwoman, hold on a minute. All favor indicate by same eye.
Aye.
All oppose, same sign. One opposition, Mr. Fuentes. Motion is carried. Thank you. We got item number 12, discussion on appropriate action to approve new rates and policies for the city of Crazel Springs Civic Center. Mr. Verdul.
Madam Mayor, members of the council, there were several revisions made to the current rates and policies. Paragraph A was amended to increase the deposit fee from $100 to $250. And there was an increase in the rental fee from $250 to $300. Paragraph B was added stating that the reservation is on a first come, first served basis. Paragraph G was amended to include no bingles allowed.
Paragraph G?
Paragraph G.
Okay, I have a correction on paragraph D. It's actually in the bolded. It says the $100 deposit is not refunded if you cancel reservation unless a 30-day written cancellation notice is given. Meaning that the deposit is increasing. Should that amount reflect the new deposit recommendation?
I was wondering if you put the one to the nonprofit on the paragraph above. I wanted to show which one.
Well, that's one.
I have that one marked.
Do you see those?
Paragraph C says that for a nonprofit or a school, there's no rental fee, but there's a $100 deposit. That's correct. So does D refer to the nonprofit or to the public or both?
If it's the public, if it's the public, it needs to be $250 instead of 100.
Right. Or if it refers to both, just strike out the dollar amount.
Just drop off the dollar amount.
Would that be clear enough?
Yeah, it's clear enough, yes.
Okay.
So then that, that means whether it's the community or whether it's the school district or the charge or whomever, that they still have to, if they cancel, that they won't get the refund?
That's correct.
Then I'm sure that I could just clarify.
And in paragraph F, able to go ahead and set up for event until the day of the event? Do they mean on the day of the event?
On the day of the event, after 10:00 AM. That's correct.
Yep.
And on paragraph, item C, and the reason that I'm gonna ask this question is because if you're gonna ask them for, I mean, if there's damage or something, the last time that we held a meeting there... held a meeting there, I don't know, if you notice, there was a lot of tissue, or streamers, or whatever you wanna call it, on the edge of the civic center wall.
Nasty, too.
Right, everywhere, a lot. So I don't know if that, if that needs to be in here to be specific? Because let's say that we send someone right now from the city, and they take all that down, every little bit, because it does look kinda, for lack of a better word, nasty, it really does. But let's say we send someone right now, and then we have an event next weekend, and then that is still up there, then it comes up. Are we going to hold them for that, hold their deposit, or is that just a given?
That's on policy C, left over here? They kinda noted right there.
We'd hold the deposit.
Okay, make sure, because that is there right now. Unless it was addressed after, I thought, do you remember?
Someone commented, because they tried to get off, and they couldn't, I don't know what they knew.
So just look at that, because if you go right now, I think that it's still there, unless there was a dress up or something.
Okay, on the subsection policy, letter E, it's, there must be security, officer of alcohol or beverages are to be served or allowed, no exceptions. That's fine. The person scheduling the event will be responsible for obtaining security. The security officer shall not be related to the applicant reserving the civic center. The city of Crazel Springs City Marshal, or can we put City Marshal Department? Could it be anybody from that department?
We could put law enforcement department. Yes, as a substitute for City Marshal.
Yeah, because that opens, it just doesn't have to be just the City Marshal, it could be from that department.
It could be anybody in the law department, yes.
Okay, we'll be controlling the event to ensure that the security officer is securing the event. I had noted from the last meeting was, and if there is no security and there's alcohol, that they were subject to a shutdown. And it's not in here.
Yeah, that should be specified, there's consequences.
We'll look at that language. If there's no security, then the event...
And there is alcohol, that is at the discretion of the department, whichever goes out there, I guess.
Law enforcement.
Boy, not that they'd have the discretion to do it, but that they'd be required to do it, to shut down the event.
Exactly.
So that, yeah, so that personalities don't get involved.
Yeah.
You shouldn't. Well, sorry, I have to, but, yeah.
And it's, and it's written, exactly, it's already, they can't say, "Well, I didn't know."
Well, yeah, and you do. You sign for your...
On N, on the size, the maximum capacity, we have 80 occupants, and there were kind of lists for the air conditioning, but I wonder about fire? I mean, don't we, don't buildings have maximum occupancies because of fire, or does it matter in that?
The maximum occupancy for this building was actually reduced...
It was 120?
It didn't rise, it was reduced to 80 because of the air conditioning system in the civic center. And so it was felt that if we reduced the occupancy, that the air conditioning would function better, and provide a cooler atmosphere for folks that are renting the civic center.
Okay, and also on the air conditioning, it's on a timer. So you will need to check on it if you feel the building is getting warm or cold, and adjust the timer, so that the people can adjust, whoever renting it can adjust the timer then.
Yes.
Timer only, but not temperature.
Yeah, because it's only the timer that's available, too, and the temperature is locked.
So how would adjusting, I don't understand, adjusting the timer helps?
Is it like from two hours to three hours to four hours?
Like, the air conditioning stops because they, they think it's, well, it's starting to get hot, and a lot of people go, "Oh, their conditioner's not working," but they don't know there's a timer, so they need to reset, you know, add more time.
Oh, okay.
So should we have that there, reset or something?
Okay.
Just to clarify.
Would you like to add some additional wording there to clarify?
Well, they probably, no, I didn't know.
Reset, some kind of reset.
I couldn't understand how...
Yeah, but, yeah, to reset the timer, because if you're reading it, there's, actually, you're getting the kind of feel like you're able to adjust the temperature, and you're not, because it's locked.
Right.
We can add, adjust and reset the timer.
I have a question on G. I know there was an incident that occurred earlier, and I just wanna make sure that we clarify it that way, it's on record. If a school organization uses it, it's a nonprofit, and they use it, and I'll be specific, where there's the GT program, let's say them, and they use it for a fundraiser for the GT program. So is it, or sure, is it a given that they cannot charge a dollar a ticket, or anything? If it's a nonprofit? I wanna make sure that that's clear.
They can't charge.
They cannot charge, they cannot. So no one can charge, whether it's for an educational purpose, or...
So the policy is consistent across the board?
Okay. Even though I know that that happened this year, and there was some kind of confusion. So, we cannot, so no one can.
And it's like holding bingles, because the city doesn't hold a bingo license.
Yeah, you're right.
Do y'all have anything else?
On the security person, are there any requirements? Can they just get anybody?
Question?
We don't have any requirements, and we haven't had any requirements that I'm aware of in the past.
I think it is noted that it can't be related to that?
Yes, that it can't be related, but...
So then anyone can get approved, like, I can?
Sure. If we had a police department, we could say off-duty police officers, for instance, that have a background in law enforcement, could serve in that capacity. But we don't have, we don't have that in place, right? Sheriff's office, maybe some off-duty sheriffs.
Well, I mean, I would think something like that, because, I mean, you might go get a compadre just to pay your security, and it's still allowing alcohol, and there's no control inside or out.
They wouldn't let us use Uncle Ray, so you do it.
So that's something we might wanna look at.
We can look into that, we'll have some conversations with the sheriff's office, and see if they have off-duty sheriff's deputies that might be able to do that.
And I think they can, because my family rents at the event center, but with the agreement that we have someone there, an officer, so then I call the sheriff department, and they said, called this person, and they set it up. So, yes, it's gotta be someone that's in the law enforcement for that building.
Exactly. Same as for our building, I think.
Question? Any more corrections, questions, additions?
All, just the legalese on the agreement itself, I've received a copy of the rates and policies, and agreed all the conditions should be there and not within. Oh, I just saw another one. Finance department, second line, key returned, time, returned up by, just strike out the word "up."
Where was that?
The box at the bottom of the agreement.
Around the bottom of the page, finance department.
The first line says, "The key picked up by," and then the second line says, "Returned up by." Just strike out the "up." Okay, I'm a magnet for this stuff.
You're a good magnet.
Okay, this is gonna sound like a stupidest question, but on J, that says, "Close and lock all windows, doors, and gate," what gate? What gate can we have at the civic center? On J?
I think there was a security gate there.
On policies, under...
Yeah, I thought there was an armed security gate there.
No. There's no gate. They're on the bottom of the swimming pool, but not at the civic center.
Can you unlock the windows?
Yeah, can you unlock the windows, or no?
The window?
Yeah.
Might as well have it in there.
The gate?
What's for security?
But the gate? What gate? But you only rent the civic center, you're not renting the pool?
Well, what if you should rent the civic center and the pool simultaneously?
The pool manager is there, that's what's going to...
I'd repute in, just so it's in there. The gate has to be kept closed. When you leave, you have to be sure the gate was closed, you're responsible.
Yeah, but you're renting the civic center enough, so...
Well, we can take the, we can take the gate out.
Yeah.
Just secure it as a suggestion.
For the record, there's not damage to the question, is there?
Well, I know, but I'm asking, what gate? I mean, what gate are we talking about?
In the past, has there ever been a remodeling where a gate was there, and it was...
I thought there used to be an iron gate.
Used to be.
Yeah, see, that's probably why it's in there. This is a very old policy, and the wording just kinda came back over on this. We could take that out, if we'd like to.
I have a question, on the key, is everybody pretty good about returning the key?
Yes, they are good. So, yes.
One of the policies, letter B, should be dollars, not dollars.
Hundred dollars damages.
Hundred dollars.
Hey, the longer you let me look at this, the worse it's gonna get.
I know, but, oh, English teacher, right?
It isn't surprising, like I said, we had a councilman, and she would come with her red pencil, she's ready to go.
And education, so, it's an awful lot.
All right.
Anything else? Okay, now, do you wanna us go ahead and approve or deny with or without the correction, or table it and bring it back, or...
I'm afraid Mr. Johnson will have something else.
There were a couple more, but I just stopped, because they were, you know, cosmetic. I think we're satisfied about, well, I'd like to look at it again, because there's a question about the deposit. Are there enough questions that we wanna look at this again? That's my question. Or do you think we have the corrections?
All I say...
If our corrections get noted and done, I don't have a problem.
Because I was just gonna say, we know, we know what it's talking, we know what it's referring to, but we all need to be clear, clarifying, for the citizens of Crazel Springs, that way to avoid any problems, any questions, any concerns.
Yeah.
So if you think that there's any, you know, if you feel that there's anything more within the meeting, we should just table it.
I would recommend that y'all consider tabling it, and us going back to the changes or amendments, and have you look at it one more time before considering approving.
Okay, we'll need a motion to table item number 12.
A move that we table this item until we can review the corrections.
Okay, motion has been made by Councilwoman Johnson, seconded by Councilwoman, hold on a minute. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion is carried. Item number 13, discussion on appropriate action on City Manager John Devouty's recommendation for Finance Director position. Mr. Devouty.
Mayor members of the council, during the budget process, there was discussion of different options to fill the vacant position of the Finance Director. And after reviewing options to re-advertise to fill the vacancy, a recommendation was made to reorganize the Finance Department, with Nora Flores, our Human Resources Director, serving in the capacity of Finance Director. We reclassified the position, the IT position, to IT slash accounting specialist. And we moved the human resource function of the Finance, of the Human Resource Department under the Finance Department. And that will show up on your organizational chart, which you'll be looking at a little bit later on in the agenda process. I recommended approval of this for a couple of reasons. One, Ms. Flores has worked in the Finance Department before, and she's knowledgeable of accounting methods. And when we attempted to fill the vacancy by advertising, we had a few applications come in, but nothing that we felt we could recommend to you in terms of actually filling that position, based on what's come in so far in the way of applications. So that's the purpose for recommending the position be filled by Mrs. Flores, that the reclassifications take place, and that the reorganization be undertaken as part of this fiscal year budget.
I don't know if I can ask it, but since we have the company, Enco, correct, that worked with the Finance, so she will receive the training. Okay, I guess my question is, does Enco provide training?
Yes, they do.
Okay, since they're already on contract, right, and so they do?
They're in the contract. They have trained the Finance Assistant, who was previously in that department. But there may be a requirement to actually provide training to Mrs. Flores, and I believe there's a fee for that. So we will incur an expense for Enco to come in and offer Mrs. Flores to learn the Enco system.
So can that training be offered to Mrs. Flores, but also to the IT person? That way, there's backup all the time, or...
Yes, it could.
Right? Okay? Agreed, I mean, is that all right? I need that backup, as much as that one person training, there's also her and the IT.
I understand.
So then, you can contact them, and they can come and train you.
And they can go ahead and undertake the training for both Miss Flores and the IT slash accounting specialist.
Any more questions on item number 13? Question? I would need a motion to either approve or deny, item number 13.
I make a motion we approve.
Item 13.
Second.
Motion has been made by Councilwoman Little, seconded by Councilwoman Fuentes. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion is carried. We've got item number 14, discussion on appropriate action on approving resolution number 502. A resolution by the City Council of the city of Crazel Springs, Texas, authorizing City Manager John Devouty to sign all United States Department of Agriculture, USDA documents related to the wastewater treatment plant construction, USDA loan, loans? Yeah, I was supposed to say loans, right? 92 slash 04, 92 slash 05. Mr. Devouty.
I have a mayor members of the council, Mr. Joe Del Choa, the area director for USDA, was here for last week's monthly meeting on the wastewater treatment plant project. He recommended that I approach City Council about having me as a signatory for all of the USDA-related documents concerning the new wastewater treatment plant construction project. There's a group that meets monthly, and it would be a lot easier to sign documents and move the project faster if I'm given that authority, as opposed to, Mayor, you signing the documents, and perhaps because of your schedule, not being able to attend meetings, and be there to actually sign documents after the meetings are completed. So that's the purpose for this particular resolution.
Council, do you see that appropriate, not the mayor signing it?
Depends on which documents. I'm assuming if the loan has already been approved, it's already been funded, I don't know which documents...
It's the application for payments to the contractor for percentage of work completed. And so the city engineer, the contractor, city staff meet monthly, the contractor brings in the application for payment. It's reviewed with USDA, who also attends the meetings. USDA has ultimate approval authority on actually dispersing funds... USDA has ultimate approval authority on actually dispersing funds for the project. And the city manager merely signs the application for payment that's been submitted by the contract, signs on behalf of the city, so that USDA can release funds for whatever work has been completed to date for that construction project. There are two loans, one ninety-two oh four was the initial loan. The city took on a debt of about five and a half million dollars for that, for that note. And then there was a smaller note, a ninety-two oh five note, that the city took on, another certificate of obligation debt with USDA to actually complete the financing needed to fund the construction of the wastewater treatment plant.
What I would add to that, if you feel more comfortable giving Mr. Vaudy that authority, and having those documents, whatever he signs, the pay request is made available to you by email or in your box after the fact, you'll, you'll always have them. What he described in terms of pay requests is, has to go through a particular number of steps, starting with the contractor making the request, engineering cert, engineer certifying that the work has been done satisfactorily, before the city signs, before it goes to USDA. So, there are a number of safeguards that are put in place, so it is convenient to not have to wait until, until either the council has to make me, or you can authorize one of you, like the mayor. Staff member usually is much more available, and things can proceed faster. But if you just want a copy of everything, put it in your box, you'll always know what's going on.
And again, USDA does attend, the area director for USDA attends these meetings, and they're the, really the final authority on what's to be paid on an application for payments submitted by the construction contractor. Those applications are reviewed and screened by USDA prior to authorizing the federal government releasing any, any money for payment to the contractor in relation to this project. So there's some safeguards that are in place that.
And if you have, have Mr. Vaudy just provide you with a copy of it, you know, your preferred method, if you ever have a question, you can bring it up on the succeeding, the succeeding agenda, but there, or you can ask him directly, but there are a number of safeguards in place, and you've already made the important decisions with respect to, you know, issuing the debt, and hiring the contractor, and deciding what's going to be done, so this is just gonna be the pay requests.
Right, now, the only signature is the mayor's for those?
Currently, currently, there's only one signature, that's great.
So, in, in, in times where she can be there, she'll go ahead and, and do the signatures, and if she's not available, that's where you proceed with, Mr. Vaudy, or he continues to do alone?
The mayor, the mayor remains a signatory.
Exactly.
You can express a preference, to say, Mr. Vaudy, our preference is you continue to request that the mayor sign off on the request, subject to availability. If she's not available, then of course, you can, you can certainly sign it. That won't take any additional time.
So it's just to add him on, right? Just to add him on? Uh, well, after we approve this, I think we put it, would it supersede any, I know there was some kind of a policy or practice of a certain amount, you spent, let's just say fifty thousand, and it's got to be processed, so that would apply here, does that make sense?
It, it makes sense, but I think in this particular case, you've already made all the, you've already made the approvals in advance.
And everything's related to USDA, it's all what they, it's all what they just say anyway.
It's this specific project, you've already approved the loan, approved the expenditure, approved the contract, approved all the amounts in advance. So, what Mr. Vaudy would be signing would be a request that's already been approved by, by the engineer, which is the important one, prior to him, and then even subsequent to that, it would require USDA's approval before, before they were paying, so I think the city will be fine.
That's good.
I don't see a problem, I've been there, I mean, every, there's a lot of, you know, it's just the daily operations of it, you've already proved a big amount to the day.
Any more questions? I would need a motion to either approve or deny, item number fourteen.
I approve, I make a motion to approve resolution five oh three. And I'll second.
Motion has been made by Councilwoman Monona. Seconded by Councilwoman Little. All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion is carried. We go to item number fifteen, discussion on appropriate action on approving resolution number five oh three. A resolution by the city council of the city of Criesel Springs, Texas, declaring the following vehicles as surplus, and authorizing the city manager John Vaudy to dispose of said vehicles to the highest bidder. Tahoe package, lease package vehicle VIN number one GN LC two EC X FR two five two two three eight. Tahoe police, lease package vehicle VIN number one GN LC two E CX FR two five three eight four three. Mr. Vaudy?
Mayor and the council, the, this item will declare the vehicle as surplus and authorize the city manager to dispose of the vehicles. There are provisions in the city charter that discuss how to dispose of city property. Received some information from our city attorney, and the city charter provisions would be followed in terms of how these vehicles are disposed of. And so, the purpose for disposing of these is, as you know, we had a police department at one time, we no longer have a police department. These vehicles are not necessary for our law enforcement department function, and therefore, we're recommending that the city council consider selling the vehicles as an option. This just gives the council this option. There's also the option of working with the sheriff's office.
In kind.
Exactly, to see if they would accept these as in kind, and give us credit for any value that the vehicles might have. We've discussed this as part of the budget process as well, so this just gives y'all another option.
So, this one, number fifteen, has nothing to do with working with the sheriff's department, try to work something out with them?
Well, this would be the first step, right?
This would be, right, this would be the first step. And, you know, we would need to follow the char, the charter provisions, of course, and, and dealing with another public entity, I'd have to defer to the city attorney to, you know, the disposal process.
First step is what you're doing this evening, which is declaring the property as surplus, which simply means that the city itself doesn't need this property anymore, so we're willing to look at our options. As I understand, the resolution gives the city manager the authority to follow the charter with respect to disposing of the, which simply means public notice, advertisement, giving everybody an opportunity to bid. And then, the city council, you have the prerogative of either chewing, choosing according to your charter the lowest responsible bidder, or you, you can reject any all days, but you can certainly separate and apart from that, express, you know, desire of the city manager, look at other options, including getting value for the equipment from the county with respect to your agreement with them. And that would require a separate agreement or modification to an existing agreement. But this is the first step.
This is the process.
Right. Whatever happens, still has to come back to you for approval, and you can exercise your, your option to change your mind or decide to go into a different option.
Before we go to sale, let's say we, we're talking with the sheriff's office, and we can come up with something, do we have to go out for bids, or we can just, because it's from one?
It.
One public entity.
Yeah, one public entity.
Now, now, with respect to entering into an agreement with, with the county, you know, you don't have to go through a public process, that's, that's simply just gonna be an interlopedal government, government, governmental agreement between county, city. There has to be, an agreement as to value, and, and the value does have to meet these certain basic appraisal criteria that, that would, and that's in, that's in, in state law, where you have to have it appraised, so that you're getting a fair exchange for what, what you're giving up. But it wouldn't require a public process, because the public wouldn't be a part of that, because it's.
I'm just wanting to go out for bids, people bid, and then we, we're working with, first work with our sheriff, and then at that point.
Sure. And you can do both of those concurrently, for example, if this prob, if this isn't gonna come back to you until your August meeting, you certainly have time to explore both options and make a decision at your August meeting.
Now, there is one thing, these are police packages, so unless we strip the vehicles of the cameras and everything else that's police-related, we really can't sell them to the general public.
No.
It's gonna be restricted to laws, law enforcement agencies such as the sheriff's office, or, or another city police department that might be interested in them.
Do we have any more questions, item number fifteen?
I got a question, I don't know if I can ask, but I got a question. See, I was thinking about it when I sleep, and just, this morning, I got a notice from a cop saying that I couldn't have any trash, like weeds or whatever, outside my yard. I had them since May, they never picked them up, and then they said that we would pick them up, that they were gonna find us. And before, it used to be three months a year, now it's only one month a year, and we get in our Texas, up, every year it's going up and up. And nothing, the city's doing good to our county, so what's wrong with that picture there?
And mayor, because this item is on the agenda, I would certainly.
That's what I was about to say, sir, that item, your, your concern could have been brought up in public comments, it's not, I mean.
They told me that I would come here, I would be able to ask you, that's all, that's all I'm doing, just asking, if you can't answer it, that's fine with me.
That's fine, thank you, sir, appreciate it.
But I, I would recommend that he talks to the city manager tomorrow.
He can come back and get on the agenda. He's actually gonna be here and make comments under public comments.
That's why he didn't put it on the agenda.
No, he didn't.
On the public comments.
On the comments section.
On the vehicles, can I say something in the vehicles?
Sure.
Yes.
Concern of the vehicle, the police unit, it's a radio. Could we keep the radios and, and add, add cameras or? The only, the only equipment that is very difficult is the radios. It's hard to use radios, because of the time or what's it, a few Carlos knows, it's difficult to acquire the police radios.
We can pull.
Because they are digital radios.
Not especially this, held with him, he can access them.
Just, just the radio, I mean, the camera, and radar, everything else, it's fine.
Right, because if you offer them to the general public, which is what your charter requires, you're gonna declare it as surplus, then you're going to have to strip them of, of certain, certain programs. To give everybody an equal opportunity to buy them, you would. But then it also gives you the opportunity, again, to decide what you would need to keep, or what you can work with the county and, and figure something out.
Yeah, we need a motion to either approve or deny, item number fifteen.
Make a motion, we approve. The vehicles.
Motion has been made by Councilwoman Little.
No, just, just type out everything.
Okay.
She said that or not?
Uh, motion has been made by Councilwoman Little, do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Johnson, all in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion is carried. We go to item number sixteen, discussion on appropriate action, approving resolution five oh four. A resolution by the city council of the city of Criesel Springs to designate and authorize signatory to sign all funds of the city of Criesel Springs, Texas. Mr. Vaudy, I have a problem with that one. With the language, shouldn't we state a name on that in the beginning, or is that the way it is? I mean, I, I see the, the, the name of the resolution, but.
In the caption?
Shouldn't the name be included in the caption?
Oh, you're asking?
I, I see it in the whereas, whereas, and not in the actual.
It's authorized.
In, in, in this particular case, I think it provides enough notice. Could it be better if you provided the name, you know, I think so. So, I mean, and if you express that, that's what you want, I think it certainly should be honored. It, it, it gets you by, but, but it would be better if you put down the name or names of the individuals.
I just wanna be so that, the way I read it, it's kinda like leaving a blank, like, oh, who are they putting?
Yes.
So I, I wanna be like, more naming X, Y, Z.
Sure.
I would rather be more.
The reason why I say it gets revised, because the purpose of the Open Meeting Act is to give the, the public reasonable notice about the public business that you're going to conduct. That's enough reasonable notice, that, that they know you're going to possibly put somebody on as a signatory. So they know what you're going to discuss, but if you really wanna help people out, you just flat out tell them.
Well, like, yeah, just to be more transparent.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, I mean, that's just something for me, I don't know about how you guys feel.
So then, if we approve it, then we can say, adding the name on it. And then that way, that way, they're requesting the minutes when she signs the motion.
Right. It's the balance between providing too much information that, that, that restricts you versus providing not enough information that doesn't let anybody know what's going on. But I think in this case, in this case, if you're only gonna add one name, two names, you certainly can just put it on.
Yeah, it's, I mean, of course, it's listed on the whereas, but I just feel more, I would feel more comfortable if it was listed on the top, as we're reading what we're trying to do. But, I mean.
I agree.
Okay, I would need a motion to approve or deny, item number sixteen.
I make a motion that we approve resolution five oh four, whereas, nor that you thought it is, it's a proper official of the city.
Motion has been made by Councilwoman Monona, do I have a second? Seconded by Councilman Fuente. All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion is carried. We go to item number seventeen, municipal judge reportedly reports. Judge Fuente. Was he notified?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, not available? We go to item number eighteen, discussion on supervisors, reportedly report, I'll start with A, Angie Rio, utility supervisor, Miss Angie.
So, okay, I don't have any, just reported, I gave you the, the policies, and we're doing on the closing, that is, we've been bringing up a little bit more money in there, due to, by the, on the council, being so.
Yes, Angie, but isn't this a report you gave us last week?
No.
It's me?
No, 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 this, this was the name that you raised in the report.
Oh. Okay, I was.
No, 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 it involves, so that you can, you can pay.
So you're closing some extra ones?
Well, on the, on the ones that we're still owing, you know, that's where the money is available, they hire, because of the closings that we're bringing in, the people that are owing.
Still have some councilor owing, I'll send it, and we're pushing to, to bring it up to court.
It was like, it was about twenty-two thousand, so if that, or are we just using more water, because there wasn't that much, is that?
Not really, it's, it's from owing, and it's just trying to, to kind of bring everybody up to just current payments, or not, you can not have so many outstanding.
Now, can I ask you, Miss Rio, to give us an update on the collection, but I, like, let's say that you could give us a percentage of the people that owe, are we up, fifty percent that we're collecting, sixty percent?
I'm thinking about sixty-five, is that current? And we have about thirty-five, forty, but, I mean, they've already made arrangements of being coming in and paying so much every three weeks, every two weeks.
Those, those accounts are, are they like big amounts, or?
We, the biggest ones, they've already kind of, were these oven of a man, they've already committed, and some of them have paid half of it, or at least, in day nine, they paid six hundred, and then they came in and did a hundred and fifty. You know, we've got them set into a minimum of every two weeks, every three, so that we, we can be, when we do the billing, there's not another bill attached to it.
So it's not on a standstill, I mean, they're, they're doing in and.
No, it's, and we're still going back, and we'll check up on the account, and if we see that they're falling off, we'll call them, we'll give them a birthday call, or we'll just, you know, go out and talk to them.
So on, on a shut-off, what, what do they get at home, if, if they're gonna get shut off? Do they get anything?
Well, I, we, we stamp them, we got a, a stamp on the, on the bill, if it's higher than two fifty, we'll put them in disconnection. And the past year, if they got two months of prior, previous month and the current month, we'll put the past month on it. Like, if they have more than two fifty, I mean, I'm trying to see that it won't go from what they deposit it. I don't want it too high because if they just up to eighty, there's not a big outstanding yield.
So then, you're, you're saying that anyone with a higher bill of two fifty will.
Yeah, we'll, we'll put in a disconnection because, I mean, I think it's a hundred and fifty deposit and then two fifty is. I've tried to just keep them at previous and, but actually current only.
I mean, like, uh, I had, like, two people approached me that they were used to paying, like, they would stay in arrears one month and pay the.
I know, but they, you.
I know, but, you know, or, or you, you of course have to eliminate those, but as long as you have the conversation.
Oh, yes, they don't come in and they'll say, well, I didn't want to, I, I mean, I'm the one that stays through three months behind, but no, that's not the case because, you know, I'm thinking here that the deposit is not.
But it's not that they can't do it, it's just the way they've always done it, so.
But they're coming in and now, but I had three preconditions, oh, I stay four, five months behind, no, we're trying to bring it into every, every month, I mean, we need the money as much as.
Uh, since we're in the utility, I have a question for Mr. Vidal, sir, Jeff Snowden, how are we with him on the rate, the rate study? Has he come in or?
He, uh, he's working on the rate study now, we should have something by the end of July, he was provided, uh, yeah, for office. He was provided with a copy of the city's approved budget, which you needed to initiate that, that, or to complete that process, so.
Just Rio brought something of reference to the deposits, are we going to be looking into those rates as well?
As part of the rate analysis, I would think so. Yes, because it's part of a, part of a project to look at the overall revenue structure, essentially to support our certificate of obligation bonded debt, which we've incurred a significant portion of with the construction of the new wastewater treatment plant. Uh, our bonded debt last year was a little over a million dollars, a million fifteen thousand. Uh, this year it's a million two hundred and thirteen thousand, so it's gone up about fifteen and a half percent as a result of that particular project. But, as with anything, you could look at, at whatever the rate analysis study suggests, and you can phase that in over a period of years as well as any other piece of structures that relate to the utility.
Okay, maybe that's something else.
Yeah, so that it's not all a major impact on, on citizens.
Do you have anything else, sir?
I got a question, I'm, I'm just curious, this is your field, right, you're entering the field, well, I think sometimes we have just two thousand, like, on one day, but the next day you have like twenty thousand or.
It depends on the, on the mail.
Okay.
The mail, the, I mean, when you set up the bill, you put them at fifteen to thirteen, yeah, and then, uh, like, businesses, I don't know, or they normally from the ninth through the twelfth, somewhere around that, that's when the billing of the, all the processing of the mails. And then there are some slow days that, oh, we couldn't, but, I mean, the mail is the one, I mean, we don't hold no mail, the mail comes in, we do it processes it every day. And try to balance every day with this event, there's no use to keep money, you have to hang it in there.
It's probably paydays too.
Yeah, it varies on the paydays of the.
Thank you, ma'am, thank you. We go to item B, join somebody on public works director.
Mayor, customer, before you have my report of the month of June, I'll go ahead and touch on, on the highlights and the, for the month. The rest of the lines are repetitions, they'll be on a daily basis. For the month of June, on sixth and, uh, June, when first we collected samples at the distribution center, samples into the system, all samples, the liquid water was safe, with no problems. Uh, also, I made with the, I went strong contractors, the General High Elementary line extension, uh, so with Mr., Mr. Castillo, he collected a sample, a back to sample, uh, sent it to San Antonio, samples were negative, so the line was put in operation, yeah. I also continue to monitor the high consumption complaints, I know Mr. Angie has the bills, talked about a high consumption. Just to give you an example, for the month of June, the wells produced to thirty-eight million gallons in thirty-day period, for the month of July, ten, twelve days, we're at twenty-one million. It's like a rain, and unfortunately, you'll have the high consumption complaints, so just to make sure, make sure that people that need us are getting right, of course, it is a, twelve days, July and August, twelve days, so that'd be something to look at.
I was going to ask you that because I see that, and I see it on item ten and eleven.
Yes, that, that's important, since April, we've been out there a couple of times, we searched the meter out, same results, I spoke to a gentleman, and we're still at that, as a matter of fact, I went, I went this afternoon at four o'clock in the afternoon, and back in April, I'm not serious, say, in April, that meter was reaching four and a half gallons per, per minute. One gallon every, every four and a half, uh, minutes, that's about three hundred and twenty gallons per day, that lady was racing through a Nico, what have you, that's about ninety-three, six hundred a month, just on the train, okay?
And normal would be what?
Uh, about a hundred and fifty gallons per person per day. She's a good lady, she'd be less for her, I went out there this afternoon at four o'clock, four, nine P M, it's not packed, and the meter was reaching a gallon every eight and a half minutes down the drain. That's about a hundred and sixty-nine gallons per day, it must have been thirty, five thousand gallons a month still, and she was.
So she has obviously a leak, so.
If something's going on in the house, it'd be, I have no, I have no chance, but it'd be a platter of, of, or.
Something, something.
Uh, so we can continue to monitor that situation, also, on more later, the, the other point, uh, Mr. Ravi, I'm sure you're like this, because we're, uh, sending back that clarifier next Monday, the eighteenth, that'll be a savings of about eight, thirty-two thousand per month.
How much?
Thirty-two thousand.
Can you say that again, over time, please? One more time with.
And also, we started to, we entered the, the old premium plant, we also began reading up those trash pumps, another thirty thousand.
Oh, how much, sir?
Thirty thousand. And of course, the man lift another five thousand, and the pad another two thousand, so that's going to add up, it's quick here, five hundred, but in the plan for the month or, like, two weeks.
That's good, good.
So, is there a celebration plan, any of these events?
Near the field, yes, and like I said, the plant's about thirty-five, forty percent complete, like Mr. Ravi mentioned earlier. We did dewater the, the Aragon Basin, this is, it's dry and it's, it's, and also, I'll contact the Spectre Tech, like I said, it'll be in the eighteenth, together with the, the, the. That's going to be, any questions?
I know I made a comment to the community that once the sewer system is up, our town's going to smell like roses, is there, can, can we put like a deodorizer or something so I can, they can smell roses? Just for our day, and then I can say, like, there's your, it smells like roses.
Did you hear too, plus that, uh, plant comes to operation, it's going to smell like a summer rain, dirt, wet, wet dirt.
Oh, wow.
It's like this.
Like a summer or a rain.
Your shower. Guaranteed.
All right.
Thank you.
So, that, good enough, Mayor.
On the conversation we had on, on the roads, the streets, like, there was a way to fix them that you kind of explained, can you share that?
We've been, uh, Mr. Marina, so we've been out there doing a survey, assessing the streets, we're trying to identify the streets that can be salvaged via chip and seal before they go into, deteriorate more than what they already are, and we, uh, have a few, also I'm working with Mr. Castillo, in identifying the infrastructure. You first want to salvage the streets that can be salvaged, but they're too far gone, that's where the infrastructure, water and sewer, and then work on the two streets. I said, we want to, longer, this is about, let me see, but yes, I know the, I'm sorry, Crystal City has the equipment, you might have talked to the city manager, I know her.
Are you good with her?
She's not a boss, yeah, she's not a boss at all. We buy something, we can rent the equipment, and sell personal equipment, we can sit out.
Yeah, well, the ones that, that can be saved, for example, hopefully we can start working on that somehow, some way.
And chip and seals, like the, what they have here in front of the, on Penney Street, that's what, that's a.
Kind of like a, a flat overlay, just.
Oil, rock, you can do a single layer or two layers.
About how long does that last? It looks fine.
Five, six, eight years.
And if there's not that much traffic.
Correct, it's residential, because residential.
It's residential.
A heavy, a heavy traffic, that's a different.
Is that kind of what they did in Crystal Hill, like the streets, their streets?
Uh, I'm not, I'm not aware.
You haven't seen them?
No.
Because that's what they looked at, like, the way they did them, and they're old enough pretty good.
That's, that's an expected way to, uh, uh, send them to the, the streets.
Is there a way we can look into what we can do, I mean, there, our, some of our streets are really bad, I mean, at least a little something for them.
I was going to pick you up the other day, I'm saying, let's go to ride, sir, because I wanted to see you. I know all the roads, I want to show you.
I think the chip seal idea, it is a great idea for, for many of the streets that we have, we've done chip seal before in other communities, and in areas where you've got residential primarily, you can get a ten-year lifespan out of a chip seal, a good chip seal, and, uh, one of the things that, that, that we might want to consider as, as we're doing the chip seal is replacing the underground utilities, as Mr. Camarillo mentioned, so that, uh, we don't have old water lines under, under new chip sealed streets, and then the water lines start breaking, and we'll have to cut into the material to access and repair the water lines, so I think that's a great, a great recommendation.
So, who does the, uh, the lines?
Water lines, you could do it in force, in-house, we did it in Crystal with a USDA, USDA EPA grant, EPA pay fifty-five percent, city pays forty-five percent, and we have a crew, we're a finger, two or five, those are precious equipment.
Sound good to me.
Yes, it is.
Maybe we can come up with a list of streets that y'all can prioritize, instead of this one.
That's a direction, I was going to say, are you planning to come back real soon now that we have our, more time.
Yes, and we go with PVC and copper, right, I have, you have galvanized, you have AC pipe, and have a poly, inexpensive but a cost promise in the future.
Oh, let's, let's do it the right way.
Yes, sir. We laid lines in Crystal with PVC and copper back in ninety-four, now it's in nineteen. All right, so where to go, I think I've seen the manager now, so we do stuff.
Yeah, because people's update on that.
That's hope for us.
Yes. And another recommendation, I know Mr. Vidal, that's a reference to Inspector at the plant right now, uh, you can tell, pick your brain, he has contacts, he asks how to get grants. He might be able to help you out.
Thank you for bringing up another morning, it's sick.
Thank you for the information.
Thank you, sir, appreciate that. Uh, we go to C, Juan Marina Street, she, she, Department Supervisor, Mr. Marina.
I know you all wanted something to leave, but at the time I was notified, you know, I don't really, I don't report, and, uh, I got some pictures here.
Can you read your book, sir, that's not a problem.
That's all been done and, and after.
So, what, what are we looking at here?
Uh, like you were looking at, at, I think it was a store back then, and then, because after we.
And it's a bit work. I did pictures too. On Red, remember we cleaned that one, Red Street, oh, but it's already been a while, so before it gets worse, I don't know, we can.
Mr. Marina, I do have a question, sir, in a nutshell, I see that you're doing a lot of work, but not because it's on my way to my house, that's not why I'm playing the record. I'm bringing it up because it was a bus stop for some of our students in the summertime, and when I passed by there, this, this little girl at, that morning, was sitting on the curb by the stop sign, and the grass, I'm standing on her lady, it's almost up to my waist, and she was sitting there. So then I make a turn, right, and I waited for her, and I go, okay, for the future that comes down to here, right, it's peace. So my question is, in that property, uh, that's by the stop sign, and let's say that there's a private fence and then it's her, who is responsible for all those weeks around the stop sign, is that the city or is that the house?
Is it still on, uh, does it see any limits?
I mentioned exactly where it's at, on Olico Pass Road, right in front of Mariana's Bandits, behind of Jose Caramantes' room, his house. That's inside city limit, so again, that property there, is that our responsibility to the city? Or the owner?
No, actually, I guess the city, because it was the city that was.
Okay, and it's been like that for a while.
Okay.
And I will tell you, I visited with the owner, at a board meeting, he goes, no, that's yours doing, and then I visited with someone, no, no, that's not our city, that's yours doing. So I couldn't get the answer, that's why I'm asking.
At least back then, some people would, would help us out, they would do it for themselves, and they have, but not, not many people do that, so.
So then that is our responsibility to the city. Tomorrow, if you have a chance, drive by there and you'll see what.
So, how, how was, how did you feel about the Fourth of July festival, sir?
Uh, tired. Yeah, we worked the, what, Saturday, Sunday, then Monday again.
Monday was.
Yeah, we were there, we were helping it out, yeah, tired. Actually, I started that creek on the.
Eleven. When you, when you get out there, you hit, to your right, Julio.
Yeah, I think I know what this is, what's up, uh, Vito perhaps? Yeah, for videos, videos.
Mr. Marina, you've done a lot of work, and we're, like, way behind, right? Because we've, we've never done this before, the cleaning part, but, you know, if, if you have a smaller workforce, we're still going to continue to get the same results, continue to clean up.
Actually, right now, we're working on the creek, between the tinies.
Yeah, I saw you get there.
Yeah, actually, like, there's like two hundred and sixty feet, that one, just, of the, I have pictures here. Uh-huh, the one they've been complaining, people complaining.
Are hand engines?
Tinies, there's a creek, and then it, it starts from, what's the eight, three, or four?
Yeah.
It ends on, oh, two, three, that's the creek. How much you seen it? Today I did a, a hundred and sixty feet of creek.
One of the things that Mr. Marina and I were going to work on is, is to talk to the sheriff's office about using a community service person now, and, uh, and just start hitting some of these areas that are, that are worse right off the bat, and so we'll have some conversations with the sheriff's office about that, see if we can get some help from them, I had some, some.
Or the, the JP's offices too, so they're the ones that, or the probation offices, see how they need to do?
Yeah.
You can even watch your.
I, I got, I got one final question, and it's, trash cans, uh, the big barrels that they're using now, or.
It took me eight weeks to work on that for the thirty-five, thirty-five gallons of sanitation, because that fifty-five is really heavy.
Mr. Vidal, the, the trash cans that are, are used through the neighborhoods, or those, what is it, fifty-six gallons?
Fifty-five.
Fifty-five gallon.
Gallon.
Yeah, I mean, those are heavy for, for, for our workers, and if, how, how do you work it if, if it's full and they can't pick it up?
They get them there with this.
But the rest is in there.
They can reach.
So, we got to have a uniform trash can or of, of some limit, not to a bit one, but, you know, it, it would help the sanitation department.
Oh, so?
Yeah. Half of the town.
Oh, as trash cans?
Fifty-five gallons, yeah, plastic.
Plastic, but they're, they're, they're large, and, uh.
They're more than they got dirt inside them.
Oh, where you can't pick them up?
Yeah, they're too heavy, so I just have to get what they can, but actually, doing that, they, they need them there and.
But as, as we go to, to trucks, like we, we said, well, this would speed up their, their workload too, make it easier, something we got to look at.
So, what are you proposing?
Well, then, you know, eliminate.
Thirty-five.
Thirty-five. Thirty-five, sixty.
The city will not pay for anything. The city will not pay for anything.
Well, they need to buy.
Oh, the cost.
That the, that the city would, would require certain sizes of containers. If you drive through the neighborhoods, you see them all over the place and it's, well, it been brought up to my attention by your sanitation workers.
Actually, me and John were discussing about the limit of either two to three, right? Sometimes they count like six or eight.
Number of, number of cans.
Trash cans, right, right, per household.
And how many, how many gallons we can, so that our, our, our workers can.
Well, maybe something to look into with the rate study where we can pass an ordinance?
Do that and, and establish a criteria for the types of cans that can be put out and use of a public service announcements advising the public that we won't pick up cans that are over.
Fifty-five.
Fifty-five. Or whatever the.
Yeah.
Forty-five.
Forty-five, yeah.
Yep, thirty-five gallon cans.
I just thought I'd put that up.
For next meeting, help me with, please, more.
No, you're fine here, I don't, like I said, I don't have a problem.
Oh, okay.
I don't have a problem with that.
All right, okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, next we go to item D, Ramdi Garcia, Water Department Supervisor.
Mayor, how's it going? Uh, we have the report, I included the CCR, which is the Consumer Conference Report, that was posted in the newspapers, well, City Hall, noted up to the citizens and we send a certified letter to TCEQ in the requirement. This is, basically, all it explains is the quality of the water, you see on the very end. Says all the violations, we have none this year.
I'm sorry, you said for this year, it, it was for twenty fifteen, right?
Right, right. Our next CCR, we're comfortable, it'll be due till July of twenty seventeen for the year of twenty sixteen. This is very repetitious water leaks that we have. So we're backups. We were, we excavated on Highway eighty-five for that eight-inch water line that comes from Agapulco that feeds the city. We have to repair it, but I'll present that in the next meeting, we, we need an insert valve. We're looking at three thousand dollars for each that we need to, to do an insert valve because there's no way to isolate that water. It was just opened up, we're gonna lose the water again. So we need an insert valve, but let's say we'll just set that.
We're gonna have savings, right? For the soap pump, maybe a little cushion there.
When you get it done.
Once, once the new soap pump's in operation.
Yeah, but I'm telling you, we'll have that little bit of cushion from these types of.
It's not on there, but they called me today, and I received a call from a day, fifteen oh nine, about a water leak.
Yes, yes, and it's been since Friday.
Uh, that leak was reported to me yesterday. This is the line location tickets that I'm talking about, and this is from the date. It was called in yesterday at two o'clock. No, I have mine. It was called in on the top, it'll show you. At the time that it was called in, which is in military time.
Fourteen hundred.
Fourteen hundred, which is basically two thirty. And it's scheduled forty-eight hours, that's how much they give to come and locate it for the thirteenth, which is tomorrow. Which, it's not saying they're actually gonna come and locate it tomorrow, but just for reference that, we are looking at these water leaks, we are calling them as we're supposed to. But that leak was pretty told to me yesterday by Rob Flores, the water meter. He's the one that knows primarily about that leak. So we did call it in, and like I said, as soon as these line locations get done, that's when we can take care of this issue.
And that's when you go and you push those spikes from the straws, and at least you know that, you know, we've been there, we're working on it.
The, the one that told me was part of leaking since Friday night.
Okay, well, we, we were notified, like I said, till yesterday, Mr. Flores is the one that notified me, he told me we have a water leak. We sent out the crew, they mark it, they call it in, and then we just wait for line okay to come in and mark off the street to make sure there's no wires, if it's clear, they'll mark clear, AT&T, uh, what have you, uh, Titan Warner. And if it's clear, then we can excavate. Because like I said, we excavate without them clearing it or without them marking, and we, we bust the line or fiber optic, the city's.
And I want to thank you for helping out, that sense of urgency that y'all have for the festival and adding that water to the county.
Right, I, it's under.
It's on there, and I saw that, and there was a lot of comments about that, there was good comments. So everyone that worked on it, we appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thanks. Thank you.
And we go to item E, Justin Llosa, Landfill Supervisor. Justin, how are you?
Well, yeah, so the, the same as last month, the landfills, approximately, doing the still the same thing. Uh, we did have a free week that month, and we opened for the first Saturday.
I'm dying to know, how did that go?
That did good, it was good.
Really?
Yeah.
You had, what, opened from eight to twelve?
From eight to twelve.
How many did you have?
Uh, I don't know, I can't tell you, I can't remember, but it, it was pretty good, I mean, better than a regular day. So, yeah, it was, it was turned out to be good.
For the four hours that you opened?
Yeah, for the four hours. A lot of people didn't know about it, they're just starting to get, you know, to realize it's open. So hopefully it'll get better. It's only once a month.
Tell me about your item.
Uh, well, we, I had time to, Mr., um.
Good hour.
Yeah, really. Uh, I think about the track loader, uh, we still, it's still down, it needs the, the tracks on it, wear and tear. Uh, it's, I mean, we only have one other one, and it's a lot of wear and tear of that one. So we, that one, in case that one goes down, we have, we have a backup.
And so you have met with him already?
Yes, yes, he does, I had talked to him about it.
Because you say that we're still waiting.
Yeah, we're still waiting on finding some.
Well, we're looking for eighteen thousand dollars.
Oh, I can see why you're waiting. Eighteen thousand dollar wait.
Yes, and we'll find it, we know that it needs to be done, and we need to remain in compliance with TCEQ. Otherwise, we'll be fine.
So what are we using?
We have a truck loader, but.
He said that's a backup.
Yeah, it's a backup, if that goes down, we have to pull the land.
So we'll, we'll find the eighteen thousand.
Well, I'm glad to hear about that Saturday, that was, because.
No, yeah, it's.
I mean, I had a lot of complaints, well, why aren't they open on Saturdays? So we're open on Saturday, I was hoping that you.
Yeah, no, there's a, there's keep a lot of people there. But hopefully it'll get better.
Okay, sure. Do you have anything else for us?
Um, that's it. Um, we do have a baseball team for the city. And we're gonna play Crystal.
Yeah, softball, we're gonna do baseball.
Um, I don't know, we need players, I don't know, we're gonna.
Well, what is it, softball?
Yeah, softball.
I don't think.
Yeah, we're gonna start, we practiced last week, we're gonna practice tomorrow.
And why am I bringing hearing about this?
Play, I cheer.
I play, I just play, I love to play.
I'm a player. I don't know if Camarillo's in it too, or if he's a player or not, but.
Wow, yes, you gave us a schedule.
Yeah, we're playing, our first game is on Thursday.
This Thursday?
Yeah, oh, in Crystal.
And we have to wear purple when they were green, right?
Well, that's, we made him so blue.
Oh, oh, a blue, this is, okay, okay. Give us this guy during the time.
Hello.
A little support you.
I'm gonna play.
I'm gonna support you, man. I'll cheer, right, I'll cheer for you.
I don't know about this Thursday, because I'm ready to get a notice. But yeah, include me, I'm on the place.
At what time did you say?
Uh, seven thirty Thursday.
Okay, so this city council made it on Thursday.
Yeah, we have a meeting Thursday. That's why I'm saying I can't do it this Thursday.
Oh, you can't cancel it.
I like, whoa, whoa, please. I mean, is it cities or what?
We just started, uh, we're, we're first meeting with City of Crystal, then maybe Jane Jay, I don't know. So we're, we'll see.
Mr. Vettas, are you playing, sir?
I'm a little too old for that.
Fort Stop, I think he said.
Fort Stop, oh, it's Fort Stop? Oh, it's Fort, it's Fort.
I'll play right.
I was playing right. When it comes to coed, I'm on the field. Or catcher. Alrighty, you guys. Uh, we go to item F, Esteban Lofe, City Marshal.
Some members in there.
Yes, sir, what do you have for us?
Mainly, I, I don't play very many friends out there. Do your job.
Play baseball, maybe.
Trying to do that, yeah, when we can. We, this last month, we had a total of two hundred and twenty-seven. We do enforce that route, that city ordinance on the route. Trying to get them to comply, and then sitting here, they, they just won't comply. They, 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 they talk to each other, the drivers out there, and it's, it's kind of difficult because they, they know where we at, and they know we break the law, and they keep, they keep in contact with each other. But yet, we do have a lot of, a lot of contacts this past month. This month isn't gonna be as much because we spent time in in-service training, which required by the commission of law enforcement. Which our, our schoolteachers have to do their in-service, we're required to do in-service. And, uh, we have a few pending and a few stop signs and a few quitting violations. But mainly, it's, it's the truck route. It was hard, this past month, it was hard because of the destruction in our towns. We get a lot, a lot of numbers this past month.
So in comparison to May, you said in June you had two hundred and twenty-seven, in May, you have what?
I didn't bring my may.
So can you, like, give me a ballpark figure, is it the same, more, less?
More than, a little more this month.
This month, yeah. And the trucks, and the trucks are still not allowed to go down that Oligo Pass Road, down that back farm, right?
Not, not, not the.
I'll be investigated the other night. Because I'll come to York and I, and I think.
There's, there's two signs out there that, that no truck's allowed on only.
I haven't seen one in a long, long time that I saw.
You saw one, the truck back there, see my face? But it is, it's a Chesapeake, uh, down there, they go deliver.
Their house back there, and that's what I think.
That's where, mainly, Chesapeake, yeah. We, uh, they, they're being compliant, and, especially in the middle, right there, going to Pando.
So do you, do y'all work weekends or?
Nothing, we're forty hours, we're forty on the week.
With the no-stick somehow?
I thought.
We pay our salary.
I'm, I'm on the, I'm on the way.
On a salary.
Hour do you rate? Salary, salary. Salary.
That's what I'm saying, I thought we were gonna get salaries.
I thought, honestly, maybe just my.
Saturday's.
That they were gonna be rotating. Since we had children that were gonna rotate down, like, and we're always covered. Think that possible?
Yeah, we work the Saturday, you won't have one for during the weekend. But we can, we do have Saturday.
And, and I'm to your point, but do you see the point that May is busier on a Saturday or Sunday than it is on a Tuesday, or?
Well, he's, he is so excited that they talk, and they know when they eat. So obviously, they know, but they don't.
But like when you rotate, then you surprise them.
Well, I already counted two hundred traders since I've been sitting here, so they know that you're here. They're not working out of mind.
But if you don't want to.
The drivers also stop Saturday and Sunday, they also go home. To visit their.
The family, they're loving it.
We cannot stretch till eight o'clock or something like that. Instead of just, we both at the same time, doing the same thing. You know, you kind of fuck with the regular schedule.
Well, he's on a salary, so.
He could do it.
He could do Saturdays. If he's concerned as the other officer being hourly, I want to sure.
The officer can work Saturday, take Monday off. That we're all.
Well, that's what I'm saying, but he's Saturday.
I mean, his salary, he can.
He's Saturday, that's a win.
Do you ever check this, any speed tiers? Well, everybody did speed on this, this part over, over here, not here.
Any, any, anytime you see me parked one here by the production credit, or what is that?
USDA. No, further down, further down.
Yes, I do, it's.
Are there any here? There. You.
Very few, very few.
Yeah, I see most of it's on your truck route.
Because, uh, with the, using the speed limit that's there right now, but like I said, if I'm doing thirty-five, everybody's doing forty-five. If I'm doing forty-five, everybody's doing fifty-five. Just to see, like, you know, what they're following the speed limit.
They see us, they're all slow now. Just my catch fall down when I go to San Antonio, when I see a black and white.
Maybe we can park one of those, uh, that we don't use.
A mannequin.
With the lights on.
Yeah, because we, we do need enforcement on this. It's crazy, the speed limit, everybody's, all the big trucks and everything. Wonder if you can help us with that, but we, we're gonna have to get on that one.
I can stay there one day and do, kind of work the area, stay there one whole day and see what.
Look, you'll try it out, see what, see what. Very good.
I think you could.
We could put a Tahoe out there, after they're sold, right?
Yeah. Hey, Oscar. Funny, funny that you say that.
Right there, right there at Thompson Street, across from Auto Zone. It changes there, that's where it changes to forty-five.
Yeah, well, that would be some traffic control right there. That's where it changes to forty-five.
Yeah, well, then you want thirty-five is going all the way to Walker.
When they, when they put a new one in there, uh, grace period before we enforce it, no? Is it recommended by state? It, it's recommended, and you, you normally do have a grace period.
But that's a two-week publishing that we have to.
Yeah.
The order.
It signs up so that it gives everybody a chance to accumulate.
But it's weeks, not months, right?
Right, exactly.
Yeah, it's a two-week publishing.
But I will be out there one of the days and see what I can do. It's cool, and I hope that'll run you over, because that's what shows us there.
I would like to really consider to alternate the week.
We can.
The weekends.
And also, oh, we gotta make more money there over here with the trucks.
Well, no, I think well for him to. Play it out and then.
My mom was having that thing, nobody forced me here now.
I know it's about money sometimes, but not all the time, it's about the safety. And if you catch them, and, I mean, because if you have a set timeout, well, they already know, let it keep running, that's what. But we don't alternate. It's about safety. Because rooms are very bad.
I just say, I think, you would do that, see what the outcome's gonna be, and I can report to, to team managers.
We'll, we'll, we'll work on that.
Well, uh, well, the reason why, I mean, his report is pretty much, you know, traffic. I don't see him really doing anything on the brush, which is fine, I mean, he's obviously, because he's on the, the traffic side of the enforcement. I mean, if that's what your main concern is and what you're doing, so then maybe.
Yeah, but like in Crystal City, where they have the thirty miles per hour, they're there, the county is, well, this is the county, or even the police department, they're, they're out there. And it's the only way they're gonna get people to do thirty miles per hour, the same way here. I mean, we want to share that with the, with the county. It'll help us out.
I'd, I'd do that from brush contact.
No, yeah, yeah, I understand, but most, I mean, ninety. Ninety-five percent, yeah, ninety-five percent of your report that you present to us is pretty much.
Traffic.
Traffic, correct. So I mean, I think that your traffic outweighs your, your, your brush enforcement.
And I know that we have some.
Traffic generates revenue to the city.
You what? That's a generate.
It generates, it's a, it's a revenue generator for the city. So we'll work on a schedule, so we'll see what we can do on eighty-five in that area that you're talking about, and, and, uh, because that would generate revenue to the city.
And the weekend.
Exactly.
And the weekend.
And the more revenue we generate, the better. Somebody's, if there's an infraction, there needs to, to be a ticket.
And being the fact that he's supposed to be salary, I mean, and the other one's hourly, maybe we can, that one's come out.
We'll see what we can do, sit down and talk.
If I make a comment, and I'm sorry, there might be an inappropriate comment, you can tell me, but I hear y'all saying it's the money and to generate the money, and I, I mean, we need the money, we know we all need the money, we know it. But again, on the other side of it is appearance, and if one of your responsibilities is to enforce the brush, brush, correct? Is what you mentioned earlier? Then that should also be a priority, because, yes, we need to generate money, but we also need to consider the appearance of our city. Does that make sense?
But, I, I, I have some contacts, normally, I like, we are known.
Okey dokey. Thank you, sir. We go to item G, Carlos Ramos, Code Enforcer, and Arnold Baguilar, Deputy City Marshal.
Councilman Mayor, y'all have the, my report in front of y'all?
Councilman, y'all have the, my report in front of y'all? If y'all have any questions. I know that for the month of June, we did, I did pick up more animals. I don't know if y'all are coming to deal with that or not, but...
No, we did get them, good.
Okay, it's coming. Ah, we've been busy for, on the animal side for the month of June, and horse, you didn't mention.
Tell me about your thirty-five weed lot ledge, your update on that? I'm gonna send them out, you know, what's your update on that? What is the response, feedback?
I've been, I've been getting calls, I'm still getting calls from, from those letters that I've sent, they, I give them a little bit more time. A lot of them are from out of town. So I do work with them, and sometimes they're looking for people. Only got a couple of names there that I give out, they call them up and get into work, you know, and they're getting cleaned. I've got other ones, matter of fact, I've, I have thirteen here that I'm, on actually, May thirty-first, I got with J.B. Cabeo, our tax attorney. And these thirteen lots that haven't been cleaned either. I've also checked on taxes with Mayor Sondal, they haven't been paying taxes for years. So I got with Mr. Cabeo and, and he's, and I've got actually a listing, and he's supposed to get, and I guess, take them away from the owners, but it's a process, he said it might take up to a year by the time this happens. Matter of fact, I didn't, I spoke to the other day about some properties that there's no response, and if we can go in the city, go in, and I know Mr. Martinez is also busy, so if we can also go in and clean them and put a lien on them, and he said yes. So that's something that myself and Mr. Martinez are gonna work on also.
I mean, yeah, I'm sure that you won't do it all the time, but at least on those that are rural.
Yes, yes.
Safety.
And there's another one here, mainly, you know, please, right in front, Mr. uh... What does, he takes his form works, Mr. Guerra, Mr. Guerra, Mr. uh...
Used to be Mr. Science, in place.
Science, I also have met, actually I contacted his, his daughter in, um... On that other side of the wall, she deals after, I, I made contact with her because her mom's sign is giving them, actually, they said that... They don't know about that property because the father left it to the wife, which she passed away, and she has nobody. They don't want to take responsibility, so that's something that we might have to, and sell...
That's a lot, that's a lot, it's a lot, is your house?
It's a house also, there's also a vehicle, but that's, I think there's a tree falling on top of the building.
Do you look at the, you also look at the house's structure, correct?
Well, to the outside, I don't go in the property.
I mean, if it's like a rundown place, like we would look at cleaning it up, if we got, if J.B. Cabeo, you know, we took it over, then we, we clear everything out.
Once, once, I guess the city, the, is not the owner, but...
The lien is placed.
The lien is placed on us, we, we have the city go clean it up.
Let me ask you a question, on Ninth Street across from Dirty's Laundry, which is the place where Mr. Ramirez used to live? It looks pretty bad, and it's a rundown building, yet we have all our parades, homecoming, whatever, come down that round. Is there anything we can do?
Yes, we...
I think that, I looked it up, it belongs to Olga Ramirez now.
Okay, matter of fact, I got a witness through, I left today on that one, and we are gonna send a letter, even with the structure, he's gonna have to, or Olga.
Yeah.
I haven't looked into the appraisal.
Well, the appraisal has, or...
Her name on it.
Yeah.
Yeah, we, we, we send them later on, I haven't sent one on there.
Because that one's been like that for about four years, seven, eight years, maybe more. And like I said, you know, we have our homecoming, classes come, we have a parade that goes by there.
That's a parade ground, that's a school ground, that's a church ground, it's used a lot.
Yes, and, and that one, actually, Arnold told me today on that one, and we're gonna give them that one.
Okay, sir, I'm gonna give you one that, right now. I love the detailed reports that Mr. Ortiz presents to us, and Mr. Aguilad is doing a really good job as far as the detail. Can we have some more details on yours? Yours is pretty general. You got numbers, but, I mean...
Is that mine?
Yes.
I thought it was three pages.
This one and this one?
I think she means this one, more broken down, maybe.
But you have this one.
On that one, it's more broken down, animals and...
Well, like, for instance, I mean, because...
The permits that I sent out.
Mr. Aguilad, like, he said, he states on what day, where he went, who went with him, and he, I always see him, 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 I do see a name on some of them, and I do see Mr. Ortiz is on one or two, but I, I don't, but I love that detail, I really do, because we can refer back to this when you, like, why, you know, oh, I went there yesterday, well, okay, yeah, it does say you did go there. You know, just more detail for us, so that way we know, we're not saying that we don't believe you guys, but detail is better than just...
Yeah, no, I understand, yeah.
I have a question, on the planning and zoning letters, now what type of, what type of letters are those? You have weed, weed lots or just empty lots with no houses, or with rundown houses?
Even if they have a rundown, the house, nobody lives in them, I still send letters to the owners.
And what, oh, that's from the planning and zoning?
Planning and zoning, whether, whatever they want, like...
Oh, you, okay, all right. And what are alcohol letter and alcohol permits?
This year, actually, nobody has been, prior, myself and Mr. Aguilad got with all the stores that sell alcohol, there were a lot of them, even the bar and grills, they weren't paying the annual fees. Actually, I, we already collected most of them, and it was, that's money that...
So they were not paying them because we were not collecting it?
I guess nobody was enforcing.
It wasn't meaning for...
And it's, it's reflective in your, in the June one? Or is just one letter?
Actually, the money that's come in, I think was prior, might, might, could have been made, made on the liquor permits that's, now everybody's, everybody's current now. So we'll, we'll keep a tab on, on, on the yearly base that they need to come, we'll send, we'll send them a reminder.
So, so what you collected, you provided that for us, is, is that pretty much why your amounts are that high, because of that, or?
Is it on, on a...
Your second quarter, your second quarter was really good.
I think that's where, where that, that's coming in, the other permits.
The permit tab, I think that was in May.
On the liquor licenses.
So you get it in May, it improves May.
I have another question, somebody takes a permit, I don't like to knock down a building, do they have a certain time to do it, or if they just don't want to do it, after all, they don't have to do it? Do we have anything like that?
There, on the permit itself, it says, sometimes sixty days, nine or nine days, it just depends.
What happens if they don't do it, they just lose that money?
They lose that money. If they do it, if they have, want to do it later on, they have to come get a little permit.
The last one, Gonzalez and Walker, and further down on Gonzalez Street, on...
Okay, what?
They're pretty bad, yeah.
Okay, Gonzalez and Walker, we have two corners that are the weed, and then it's been...
It's a jungle.
It's been there. Those are in here, that I've talked to Mr. Cabeo. So he's working on, getting those properties also. I think, oh, Mr. Martin, like I said, maybe put a lien, even though he's, he's in that process, we can also go up there between them whenever he has to, since Martin is, but we can, I think there's a lot of properties that we need to, we can...
How are we on the skirting?
Uh, the skirting, I think, only have one, this one on having trouble getting, talking to the owner here on, is it Third Street?
I think it's Third, yeah.
The Third Street, he put, just in front, not the side, so the back. He started, he started it, but he never, he never finished.
On, on J Street, if you go all the way down, there's one they set up there, and there's nothing, no skirting, no nothing.
J Street.
Yeah, going toward Capo, Zimmerman. High Street.
Actually, that's a house.
It's a mobile, when I saw it, well, it is a house that they moved over there?
Yeah, it was actually a house that moved.
Really?
But it's a modular home? It would be considered a modular home?
I don't know.
Also, there's one on, it's by a street, and it curves like that into, I want to say Hidalito?
I work with Ms. Muñoz, yes, matter of fact, I, I had sent a letter to the wrong person from that one, that's why he hadn't skirted, yeah, Rod Muñoz, and he's in a, he's in a...
You have anything else?
Well, you know, you've got all this stuff in your head, I would appreciate it, you know, like the weed lots, addresses, you know?
More detail like the mayor said.
Yeah, yeah, addresses, dates, that would be very helpful.
Sure.
Or certified, well, you don't send certified letters anymore, right?
Well, I was trying to, because the first time I sent it in May, it got very expensive, and Mario has a privacy on them. Pick, picking shoes, you know, but matter of fact, today, myself and Arnold were talking, because he also went to the code enforcement train, and he said it is, they need to be certified, we need, now. So we're gonna start sending them certified.
Well, the mail you sent out, and, and the ones you don't get a response is what Mr. Johnson is saying, maybe we can get a detail on that one, how many, you didn't get a response?
Okay, yeah, okay.
Then how many you did, and...
That's why I asked you...
More information, more information.
I remember.
Send them out with the update.
That, what my dad used to do, he'd send a regular letter, and he'd got no response in a week or two, then he'd send a certified letter, yeah.
I think the ones that I made, and they're minimal, the ones that I didn't get a response or have, have not, I think, I'm gonna turn around and send a certified.
Yeah.
And there's not that many, I'm still getting some people that are, need it just maybe a week or two more to come down or find somebody to clean it up, but it's...
Anything else for Mr. Ramos?
Nope.
Thank you, sir, appreciate it. Okay, we go on number nineteen, discussion on appropriate action on improving city free experience organizational chart.
Mayor, I'm here to the council, you have a copy of the final organizational chart that was prepared as a result of the recent fiscal year sixteen, seventeen budget process. And if you look at the chart, there was some reorganization that took place, we spoke a little bit earlier about the finance department, which now contains a director, an IT accounting specialist, and also handles the human resources function. In the health department, we've, we organized to have animal control and code enforcement underneath that department. There were a few other changes in terms of personnel, reorganization, movement from one position to another, some reclassifications, those are all reflected in the, in the final organizational chart that's presented to you today.
I know, in one of the meetings, I don't know if it was a special meeting, but one of the meetings that you were there, you said, I had asked you, in your absence, who would we go to, or who would be someone that you would say would be next, and you mentioned the city clerk. I want to make sure, is that still accurate, is that still?
I mentioned the city, yeah, I mentioned the city clerk.
Yeah, you did, I remember that.
There's a history here where your last tenured city manager was city clerk, Mario Martinez. And so I recommended that because that's historically, I think, or the, the way it was and the way the progression has gone.
And I think the charter has that the city manager designates, you know, if he's not gonna be here, he can send the charter.
That's to come when I had asked him.
You're the one that, that says, okay, you can go to the meeting.
Correct. That's why I had asked him, I mentioned that.
And we, we had an incident where Mario had often part surgery, he was out for two months, and he left his letter designating, at the time it was the finance director and then it was the city clerk.
City clerk.
But of course, it was written.
It's all over your account, right?
Because if you were gonna do that, then it would be best to indicate it here, if you were, I remember that you shared that with us. And the other thing that I was gonna say is, can you just add, it's just, just a suggestion, revised, and the day that you revised it, because if you ever change it again, you just revise it, so...
There should be, there should be a date on this.
Everybody stays, right, as of the year, and then revise somewhere along.
And it'll show the, the year and the date that...
Exactly.
In the water department workers, are there, are there three, or are there more than three?
In the water department, we have Mr. Resma, Mr. Guerra, and Mr. Andrews. We, we have a couple of temporary workers, we actually have three temporary workers. We met with staff last week, and what we're proposing to do with the temporary workers is move them to areas where we're short on manpower, and use them as needed, because Mr. Camarillo doesn't need all three of them at this stage of the wastewater treatment act of project.
Yeah.
Mr. Veradi on, on health department, animal control, Carlos Ramos, and then under that code enforcement, Arnold Aguilad, so Arnold Aguilad falls under Carlos Ramos?
Uh, no, they're both in the health department, they're, they're independent, they support each other in animal control and in code enforcement, so they, they cross over.
Falls under you?
As needed, yes. They would be directly under, under me, under the same badge.
So what do you indicate that, under your, exactly, but then it goes, so you, and it goes all the way down, and it is, right?
And the reason for that is because the city council has placed a priority on, on unification and code enforcement, so I thought it would be best if they, if they were...
I think we discussed that, yeah. Discuss that.
And the city marshal would fall directly under you, right?
The city marshal, yes.
So there's nobody under the city marshal?
No.
That's it?
That's it.
So he is nobody's supervisor? From what I'm looking at this, right?
He doesn't supervise anyone?
Right, it's just a one-person department.
So he, supervisor's more than half of the staff, correct?
Okay, so I have a question, under, under the finance director, is the IT slash accounting specialist report to her?
Yes.
Or is it just a department of her?
Uh, it's a, it's a division within the department that report directly to the finance, it reports directly to the finance director. And the finance director, of course, would also have a human resources responsibility, which I understand historically also, that has been done in the past.
So do you want us to approve this now, or do you want us to table it until that next special meeting that you bring to the table? So you can make your change of...
Well, I don't, I don't know that there are any changes to...
You're not just being a realist, okay?
Just, just add the date.
Just add the date, okay?
And we'll use today's date as the approving date.
Okay, I, I have a quick question, I could be wrong, the utility supervisor was, also had under her the water department supervisor, is that no longer the case, is that what I'm seeing here?
What department do you have?
The utility department supervisor. The water department supervisor was under her, is that no longer the case? Or was I, was that wrong? Was that right?
We never had the water department under the utility?
Utility department supervisor.
That's the toll department.
That's the toll department.
I thought it was prior, wasn't he in charge of Maka?
No.
I'm tired.
Sorry, yeah.
Okay, so that answers the question, that answers the question.
It does, okay.
Okay. Okay. My question's open answer. I would need a motion to either approve or deny the, I don't remember the answer.
I'll make a motion that we approve the organizational chart with just adding the revised date.
Okay, motion has been made by Councilwoman Little, do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilwoman Fonten. All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
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 All opposed, same sign? Motion carried. Item number twenty, discussion on appropriate action on personnel manuals, section nine point zero four, vacation leave, you should review it.
Uh, Mayor, I'm here to the council, this item is for discussion only. Mrs. Flores has come across a situation. She'd like to go ahead and explain what it is. Would like to get some input from the city council. And then come back to your later date, possibly amendment to the, to the personnel manual itself.
Okay.
Recently, I guess, beginning on the, this year, January, we started off with NOVA time. That's the time accrual system. Every single city employee has to clock in and out a part, well, hourly. The problem we're having is that it's so accurate now, where the vacation leave kicks in. And if you do not take your vacation the way the personnel policy states, you're gonna lose all those hours. So, our vacation leave balances by the end of the fiscal year, they start all over again. The maximum you could have was ninety-six hours. We have quite a bit of employees that were unable to take their vacation. Majority supervisors, time, really, we, you know, it's kinda hard for us to take the time. But you also have city employees as well, your hourly, that are gonna lose out. And I'm talking about anywhere from, they range from eight, sixteen hours, fifty-six hours. It just depends where they're at, what department they're working in. So what we wanted to do is request from council to allow them, at least up until the end of the calendar year, to take their vacation hours. Being that this system is actually, I mean, it's very accurate. It's doing what it's supposed to be doing. I don't think that we gave them enough notice to where even though it states in the policy that it would actually run through and do all of it, and the first thing we do is, we see our time sheets and it tells us, you've lost so many hours. So we've had quite a bit of employees calling in and asking, well, what do we do? I mean, we lost all these hours, if we wouldn't have known, could have taken them. Again, they did sign off on their personal policy manual. It does state it on there. Except now it's being enforced just like everything else. The system, of course, will not discriminate against anyone. It's everybody across the board. So we wanted to check with council and see if we could just allow it for this one time and let the employees take their vacation hours, at least till the end of the calendar year, and then work on the policy to update it. Maybe either keep it the same way, I don't know, recommendations will be made. But we wanted to hope and see if you would allow that.
I, I see you have, as you're, the packet, I don't know, paper or packet, you have a block that's highlighted, is that what you're proposing, or that's what you want to change?
No, 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 no. This that I had highlighted is just advising council that all those employees that qualify have to meet the yearly qualification. Any employee that does not meet, of course, that yearly qualification forfeits all their hours or vacation hours that they recruit.
So, this is what you're wanting to change?
No, the one thing that we wanna look into changing is right underneath vacation leave.
It's a twelve hours, you're saying, right?
The twelve hours. Because it's telling us that it's gonna reduce it within those twelve days, reduce the days to twelve, and then the twelve days without compensation. Any of those days, exactly.
Well, I know, in my place of work, we give them up to a certain day and we tell them in a month in advance, okay, remembers, reminder, I'm gonna say by the end of June, you have to have all your comp time, take until people know. We remind them, remind them, but we give them. We are very specific. And they know, I mean, because it's only fair, because they did work and we approved it, they worked, so let's go ahead and know it to them. Well, I don't have a problem telling you, letting them take their time, because they've worked, they've earned it, and then start again, you know, and letting them know. And it'd be fiscal, it'd be specific, and remind them, and they should take their time.
Exactly, because this is all your choice. Like I said, the time accrual system, it's very accurate. It's doing what it's supposed to do.
Yes.
Policy could remain the same, just this one exception, because of the transition to that.
So what's the practice? Can we just, because it's not written of what you want us to approve? Do we, I mean, how do we say it, word it? And then when you come back, we approve it, but it's sent for this month?
We would work with Mr. Martin.
We're still gonna have to approve something in writing if you deviate from what you've already approved.
Right, that one's already there. So, are we having a special week, well, Thursday?
No, the agenda is...
Very close to it.
Very close to it.
This one doesn't cover...
But the agenda item, you have it in discussion and appropriate actions or so, we're able to take action if we need it on item forty.
But if it was written, correct?
Well, you could, but the attorney's saying that, and, and that's why I suggested it'd be just a discussion item earlier on, so then we can, we can decide on the...
Well, see, that's why I was thinking, it was highlighted, because that's what she was proposing, but she says it's not what she's proposing.
Usually what you do is, you have your policy and then you shade or you mark out the one that you want to, you know, go or delete, and then you say, this is what we want. Either that way, if we approve it or not, it's already there.
If I can, the, the mayor is correct. You, you still have the flexibility, but what really involved is trying to figure out exactly what you wanna do this evening. Part of the difficulty is without you knowing, aside from the work, you need to know how many employees are affected, what the leave balances are. Because if you're gonna have employees take their time off between now and the end of the year, you're gonna have scheduling issues potentially arise, because you're gonna have a lot of people that just simply need to take their time off. A lot of times, they accrue, whether it's comp time, you know, comp time or vacation. It's accrued for a very specific reason. You have certain employees that simply can't take time off because you need them, or they accrue extra time because you need them. So, it's hard to discuss that within the context of saying, now, let them take their time, because some of those employees, you need. You're licensed operators. You're people at the wastewater treatment plant. So, you really have to look carefully at how you're going to make that transition and still meet the city's needs. Because to have everybody take off all the time throughout coming, in the next six months, might be challenging if you don't have all the information in front of you this evening, including how they plan to take that time off. So that you'll know as a council how it's going to affect
The day-to-day operations.
The ability to, to take care of the public's business. So, you could come up with something today, but it's gonna be somewhat challenging, because you're gonna be operating without a lot of information, unless you already has it. Or you can get all this information and then have your department heads or city manager come back with, this is how we plan to, this is how much accrued. Because it's all, pretty much, you don't know what the liability is. It could be tens of thousands of dollars in terms of, of, of what it represents. So, you can figure out how much time, how much money, how many employees, and who these employees are and how they plan to take this time off. And then, the department heads are gonna need to know, because it affects their ability to do their jobs and, and schedule and make sure that things get taken care of. So, I, I think you might save a lot of time if you revisit this issue in a future meeting. It can be as quickly as you can decide to, it can be in a special meeting for next week.
I mean, we can, you wouldn't go past the calendar year if we, if we see it's gonna be too much of a crunch. And because I do want to, we need to honor...
Abs, absolutely.
I mean, it's, you're just throwing that out there as a ballpark, but it's time.
If we just so that we, you know, don't get all our employees extremely upset with...
So, yeah. So maybe look at it that way, we, we need to go further, longer, from a majority, I like.
Right, what you're trying to avoid at all costs is any employee losing the time they've already earned. But then, what you're not providing for is that while they're trying to take time off between August and December, what happens to those employees that are gonna keep accruing time because, because you need them? You guys have, you've lost a lot of employees over the past year. It means you're, you're forcing yourselves to become more efficient, more productive with fewer employees. And that, that's a good thing, but then, if you're now, they can't lose their time. It's, it's a huge morale buster. But then, you might need a little more time to transition over, and the system's gonna have to account for that. For more information about it.
Well, you would know more, because you see the numbers, but if you need us to meet, tell us one, and we can, if it needs to be done before our August regular meeting, then by all means, set something up with...
But is there anything on the charter to compare, to say, 'cause I know you can pay it in, in time, vacation time, comp time, right? Or is, is there anything in our policies to say, or pay, okay?
We could. We did discuss that, I discussed it with the city manager. But currently, in the situation we're in...
But I'm just, I'll just, and I know that...
Yes, exactly, we, we did discuss that as well, but...
It's there, in case if we were at a better state, it's there for them.
Yes.
For the next time, or in two years.
Exactly.
It'd be the easiest fix.
It'd be easiest to pay them again. I mean, I know, it's real hard for me with my cell phone. But what we do is we pay, one of your days, this time, you this time, you this time, but it's all has to be approved by the supervisor and the city clerk ultimately.
Yes.
After...
He still has to approve the vacation.
No, I don't need that, so...
Yes.
So, I guess it's discussion, or, or do you need us to table, or just discussion?
I think at this point, from the discussion we've had, a discussion would be in order and then come back to the city council with more, uh...
With more of, yes.
Exactly.
And what we need to do, or what we can do.
Regarding the impact, what we can do, what we can't do.
No, it's just for discussion purposes. We've already directed him to.
Okay.
Correct, just discussion, no action needed.
Well, it, it's, you can do, you can do either. Your action can be to direct the city manager or HR. I mean, finance director can do whatever you wanna do, so that can be part of the action.
That's fine. Yeah, I'll get it done, then I'll come back again and meet them.
So we need to direct the city manager, which way we, what we wanna do? So then I'll need a motion, right?
I wouldn't know how to phrase it.
Yeah, I don't know.
I would make a motion that we give the direction to the city manager to review the vacation policy, the leave policy, and come back with a plan to recommend us for the needs. Is that acceptable?
I think he pretty much gets what you want him to do.
I should learn that motion.
Motion has been made by Councilwoman Little, seconded by Councilwoman Johnson. All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign? Motion is carried. We go to item number twenty-one, update on purchasing land for the new convention center, civic center and swimming pool, Bobby Bonganal. Mr. Bonganal.
Mayor, that's gonna be an agenda item that I would like to discuss in closed session because of the nature of the discussions. And I certainly don't wanna put the people I've spoken to, you know, in any defensive position based on who they may or may not have spoken to. So, I prefer to go back under the real estate exception, which is section five fifty-one oh seventy-two. And it should not take more than a few minutes.
Okay, so at eight forty-four, we convene into executive session? And also, this is the second time I've seen it. Bobbly, Bobganal. Are you ready?
Ready.
Okay, at nine twenty-five, we come back into, we convene into regular session? We are on item twenty-one, update on purchasing land for the new convention center, civic center and swimming pool. Mr. Bobby Bonganal, there is no action needed, it was just a discussion?
But I have a question, Mayor.
Sure.
I would like to know, what is the intent, what is the purpose, or what's the need of discussing a complex center for this, a complex center on behalf of the city of Carrizo Springs?
What's the purpose?
Purpose, what's the intent, what's the need? Who are we having these discussions?
Okay. The discussion is for us as a city council, go out and negotiate land purchase for the construction of the new civic center slash swimming pool. I don't know how, how we would, what is a proper term for, sort of, like a...
Complex?
A complex.
Conventions, complex.
It is very obvious, you can't say, ours is in bad shape. We wanna give back something to the community, to where they can enjoy themselves, hold a festival, not a festival, a reunion, whatnot, in one standardized location.
And it should be noted that the funds to build it would come from the hotel motel tax. They can only be used for something like that, to go bring people into Carrizo Springs, and not for anything else.
So, no taxes, no, no taxes from the people of Carrizo Springs are being used. So really and truly, we need to thank those that visit and stay at the hotel, because it's, all this is possible because of them.
Okay, so then, the, with the new convention center that we got from the county, do you think that it's necessary that we need another complex like that? Or would that be, what, I guess what I'm asking is, would we just have a civic center? Or could, or what else is going to be included in this complex?
The swimming pool?
Okay, the swimming pool, the current swimming pool?
It could be a smaller convention center in town.
Okay.
Possible city hall offices, correct?
The water park, like we discussed, I mean, it, you know, the possibilities are limitless of what we can do. And, and as far as... Spending the money.
Well, and, oh, one, another thing we discussed is, the, the county facilities are out in the county. We're the city council, we wanna do something that is to the benefit of the citizens of Carrizo Springs, centrally located, that has facilities that people can go and use for convenience, for study, for meetings, for fun, for parties, that doesn't require an admission cost. And would also have a place for conventions or for, what am I looking for? Festivals, things, that would be right here in Carrizo Springs.
Art functions, art functions, and types of things like that.
Yeah.
Recreation, recreation.
Recreation, education, entertainment, in Carrizo Springs, for Carrizo Springs, and using the restricted funds that we get from the hotel motel taxes.
I know that the question was asked, you know, was posed, uh, why would we need another convention center? And, and I think what I hear y'all say is that we're going to use funds and the community, the residents will not be taxed at all. We're using them from the actual hotel motel, from the bed, put a head in the bed, which, in, in essence, the law is very specific how we can use those funds, correct? So now, we're, we're going to leave, uh, we're gonna have a facility where our community can use it now, an investment for years. It can be there thirty, forty years from now, at no cost to the city. So I guess what we're hearing is that we wanna use our, our funds in a smarter way for the future, for investment. And really, if, if we choose a very good piece of land in, and it's in town, it could add to, it could add to the unification of our community.
Very well.
Right, I'm thinking that one here, because I know that, there was a question out there, why another convention center? But that's one. Mr. Veradi, would you like to, I'm, I'm just wondering, because for those people that had that question?
Well, I think to answer the question why, if you look at the civic center that we have now, it requires a lot of maintenance, it's an older building. And for the city to consider a new convention center, new facilities, to be paid for without taxpayer funds, but to be paid for with hotel motel taxes... to be paid for without taxpayer funds, but to be paid for with hotel motel occupancy tax funds that generate tourism to the community, that bring in traffic to our hotels, heads in beds, those sorts of activities actually increase the city's revenue sources and allow the city to look and not be so dependent on animal and property taxes as well.
That's all I had there.
No problem. So there is no action to be needed on item twenty-one, correct? We don't need action. Okay, so I go to item number two, adjournment. I would need a motion to adjourn. Motion has been made by Councilman Johnson. Do I have a second?
Second.
It's fine.
Seconded by Councilwoman Quentin. All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion is carried at nine thirty-two. Thank you.